All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 25th City Council Meeting. I would like to first do our roll call and introduce our staff. To my far left is our City Attorney, Mr. William McClure. To his right is our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. To her right is Councilmember Catherine Carlton. To her right is our Vice Mayor Drew Combs. To my immediate right is Councilmember Betsy Nash. And to her right is Councilmember Ray Mueller. And to his right is our City Clerk Judy Heron. If you would like to speak on any agenda item this evening, please provide the City Clerk, Ms. Judy Heron, with a speaker card. Members of the public are encouraged to direct their questions and comments to the City Council. I will ask staff to respond to questions at the completion of the public comment period. We all rise and we can do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is to report out from closed session, and at this time, we do not have a report. So Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment cards? On Item H1 or on public comment?
Public comment.
Okay. Mr. Bill Kirsch?
I'm Bill Kirsch. I'm on the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm here just as a private citizen. I thank you all for your incredible work. I'm in awe, so thank you. I want to complain about what I think's the most dangerous intersection in the city, and it's right here, maybe a block away. It's Alma and Ravenswood. It's one where you have to wave the red flag so you don't get hit by four lanes of speeding cars. We have an opportunity coming up. I think that intersection is going to be repaved, Ravenswood. And we could do something about it. I don't think anybody would design, if we were going to design it from scratch, would design that intersection the way it is. It's hazardous to pedestrians. It doesn't need to be. So I would just urge you to take the opportunity to maybe put it on the agenda and see if we can get an intersection there that's truly safe for this community. This intersection, Alma and Ravenswood, it connects Burgess to the downtown. It connects Burgess to the train station. Soon we have 1300 coming online. We have the Schmidt Building. City staff crosses that. I'm sure you all have used that intersection. It makes no sense to have an intersection like that in our city in the year 2020. So I urge you to do something about it. And we have an opportunity, maybe trial or something, when we do this repaving in the fall. So anyway, it's, I think, the busiest intersection in the city and the most dangerous. And I would hate to see us repave and have it look exactly like it is today. It would make no sense for a Complete Streets community to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch, for your public comment. And at this time, I will be reordering our agenda to call Item H1 first. Ms. Winkler, did you have a public comment?
Yeah.
Mickey, are you speaking on Item F5 or on public comment?
Well, this is public comment for the consent calendar.
Oh, so we're, Ms. Winkler, I am reordering the meeting so that I can call H1 first.
Okay, I'm going to leave then. Thank you.
Ms. Winkler, if you'd come back and just say your public comment. This is on which item, F? Can you pull the mic down?
On F5.
Can you pull the mic down so we can hear you? Thank you.
This is on F5.
Okay.
And I'm asking you to, when you get to the consent calendar, I'm asking you to pull F5, a report which addresses transportation in our city. And this report from the steer group states that, quote, Menlo Park's location at the San Mateo-Santa Clara County line and near Palo Alto presents limitations in public transportation options. However, the steer group so far, report so far fails to look at what transportation options are available. And Bell Haven needs real relief now. I'm asking you to instruct the consultants to consider a commute gondola that would transport Bell Haven residents to downtown Menlo Park and Caltrain. The new Sequoia School and Marsh Road developments could be tied to the system. Gondolas, once approved, can be constructed in two years, not the decades we are talking about for regional options. Commute gondolas, they're used all over the world, on both U.S. coasts. Two are just built in Florida. A third is being considered there. Florida's into it. They are relatively cheap, emission-free, they run continuously. They could be built entirely within the city limit and need no regional okay. I spoke to Mila, the outreach person for the Manzanita Project, and she said she plans to suggest an east-west gondola for her city. So please discuss this report and ask the consultant to at least consider an option that expands transportation without competing with cars and buses and bikes by using the air and would free Bell Haven residents during commute hours. Thanks for your consideration, and thank you for letting me talk now.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Okay, we are calling Item H1. And that item is to approve the interim service levels provided during the construction of the Bell Haven Community Center and Library Project. Appropriate $1 million for interim services and waive purchasing requirements and increase the city manager's purchasing authority to $500,000 for interim services. A letter was distributed to the council that was from the seniors that are actually present here at the City Council chambers. There are copies available for public review in the binders on the back table. To introduce this item, we have our Finance and Budget Manager, Dan Jacobson, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you again. Just as a brief caveat, similar to last time, I will talk about mostly process and what we're requesting of the City Council. I'm not the subject matter expert on a number of the items, but they are available for questions as they may come up. So I have a fairly brief agenda for you tonight, given that you saw this quite recently. I just want to briefly review what was discussed at the study session and some feedback since then, review the staff recommended interim service levels, provide you with a benchmark cost estimate, and then ask for your consideration and let you know what the next steps would be potentially. So after, or during the study session, we discussed various services currently offered. Some of the ones that had particular interest were youth-aged gym drop-ins, teens in particular, and senior center programming. We provided the interim service level framework and the suggested levels at that time. And since then, there was a lunch with seniors. So a number of staff and the senior center participants attended that lunch. Very briefly, to review the interim service framework, this is exactly the same as last time. Three tiers of priority service, starting with Tier 1 being the critical ones, and then Tier 3 at the lower end being those that are very prohibitive to provide. And then a range of potential service levels in the interim, ranging from the same level to suspended temporarily during this construction period. So shown here is the staff recommendation for service levels. I do want to be responsive to one comment that came up during the study session. These are the low end of the goal service levels. They wouldn't prohibit offering services at a higher level if there were a cost-effective way to offer those, so that, do you want to make that comment? And then there is one minor change from the study session, so I want to highlight what that includes. There is the addition of the after-school childcare program. That's the second line on here, Tier 1 and at the same level. But one caveat here, the goal is to provide functionally the same level of service, but there may be some restrictions for this item in particular. Depending on the available interim sites, there is the possibility that some compromises would need to be made to the after-school childcare. The examples could be for the location during the full-day period. Those would be like spring break or the summer camps. There may need to be some compromise there. And another, so during those times, they couldn't share space with other services, which is what was potentially planned. And then another could be for the licensed status. So there are needs such as a walkable playground for the licensing need. The goal in this case would be to provide substantially the same level of service, so that would be, for instance, exclusivity of the childcare during that time and the same level of service provided to the kids there. But it could temporarily be de-licensed if that were the case. So in terms of a couple non-changes, some of the things that were talked about at the study session were teen drop-in classes and the senior game room. These are unchanged in the recommendation that's up there. In terms of the teen drop-in gym use, the service population is extremely limited. And given the prohibitive ability to provide that service, the recommendation is not to change the service level now. And that does, again, not prohibit evaluation of cost-effective alternatives if there could be one that would be identified. The senior game room, I'll touch on more in a moment, but this would be a case where staff recommends a preference for maintaining the level with the understanding that it may be a difficult constraint to meet. With respect to those services that would need to be reduced, staff would make every effort to continue the special events tied to the lunches. Some reduction in services are essentially inevitable, however. One case would be the pottery classes, as providing a replacement kiln would be extremely difficult. But staff would attempt to identify cost-effective, adequate spaces to maintain as many services as possible. So do want to highlight that. So understanding that the universe of possible combinations to provide interim services is incredibly vast. What we tried to do is set a benchmark so that, a reasonably estimable benchmark, so that we could sort of constrain that a little bit. In this case, it essentially equates to modular units on unoccupied, city-owned land. And the reason for that is essentially because it's easy to quote those. So I want to walk through the components of that benchmark and then talk briefly about how the range of potential solutions really expands as you consider other options. So starting at the minimum required space ones, a multipurpose assembly room would be essentially a large modular unit. This would be similar to where the senior center currently has its lunch program. So a large area, a large space there. This would be a large modular, one of the larger modular units available in terms of what we quoted. A 24-month cost for this is approximately $155,000. That includes the setup, the month-to-month rental, and the hallway cost. So that's the all-in cost for 24 months for this one. So the next item on here would be a classroom or a programmable space. Similar to the larger modular unit, this one would be a small one. Or a small or medium one, there are two different lines that are outlined in the staff report. The costs are very similar. For the medium one, it's $42,000 for 24 months. Again, the same cost component as the large modular. And so for, while the aforementioned ones are for the actual covered spaces where programming would be held, site work would be required. So prep work to prepare any unoccupied space to hold these modular units. And so this could include anything from paving, grading, adding parking spaces, bringing utility lines to the edge or to where the units would be, and the permit work that would be required. And so these are estimated at approximately $430,000. And that's essentially irrespective of how many units go on there. So if one portable unit goes on a large lot, two portable units, the cost is functionally fixed on this. So on the low end of this, and that's really just looking at the two buildings that were mentioned, that's about $627,000 as an estimate. However, it could run much higher. And so some of the items that would be, potentially add-on to that would be a mobile kitchen or another dedicated space, which could be a smaller portable unit as well. That would run toward $812,000 on the high end of the estimate. Again, this is just on city-owned, unoccupied space, assuming that one could be found that would house that many units, which is, we are looking at all the possibilities but haven't identified one in particular at this point. This is just intended to be a benchmark. And so to that point, while this is sort of what we were able to quote on a reasonably estimable basis, an alternative could be a leased space. So that could be from a nonprofit organization in the area. That could be retail space that's available. There are any, or some mix of the above, whether that's citing units and also leasing space. The number of opportunities is quite large. So to give a preview of what to expect next, if council gives direction to move forward with providing the interim services, the city manager and staff will negotiate with potential partners to narrow down the range of potential solutions, see what could meet that mix of services. Again, that could be any number of nonprofit organizations, landowners, whoever has this space that could be potentially used for interim services. The requested direction allows for a mix of services. So again, anything from purely modulators to rental to in-between. The first priority being the minimum level meeting the City Council's direction, which is one of the things we're asking for tonight. The next criterion would be lower impact to affected populations. Again, these are seniors and youth primarily. And greater colocation would be preferable simply from a cost savings. There could be synergies in terms of transportation and simplicity alone. And then rounding out the list, lower total cost obviously would be ideal and within-city boundaries would be the last thing that we would intend to consider. And so there are essentially two outcomes of this process. Either there are some solutions that are identified, and staff would return with a report on how those will be provided, or none could be provided within the constraints that council provides tonight. And then staff would return to council with an updated estimate and request for action at that point. So what staff is asking for you tonight is, first of all, the approval of interim service levels as recommended or by identifying specific changes to those. One component that I would like to highlight here is the need for direction on the use of a kitchen rather than alternative meal provision. There is no, there's no recommendation to change the level of meals provided for the seniors, but that could be provided in a number of different manner or in a number of different ways. If there is a preference to use a kitchen and have staff provide it, we would appreciate that direction tonight. The other one would be a game room. So both of these are very unique cases. They essentially cannot be used for multiple purposes. And so if there is a desire by council to have these, we do need that direction so that we can include those constraints. The next portion of the action is a budget appropriation of $1 million to provide services for up to 30 months. This is the best current estimate for a 30-month period. Obviously, a shorter period would be preferable and a lower amount would be preferable. And staff will do everything in its power to identify a lower total cost while making sure that cost-effective services are provided. And this would be from the Library System Improvements Fund. The next portion is to waive the bidding requirements. This is the city council's purchasing policy that requires informal bidding above the threshold of $37,500 for an individual agreement in the current fiscal year and a $200,000 threshold for formal bids for public projects. Related to that is the request to increase the city manager's authority to $500,000 for any single agreement or service or space for this. And that would allow the city manager room to negotiate and find the best mix without having to return to City Council for an amount over $75,000, which is currently the city manager's limit. It is important to note that this increase in authority and the bidding requirement waiver would only apply to interim services. So they would, the city council purchasing policy would remain in effect for all other procurement decisions other than those related to interim services. And then the final request is to direct the city manager to return to City Council and report on any use of the expanded authority in order to negotiate agreements. This would be in the form of an informational item at a regularly scheduled City Council meeting. The intent is that it would be very visible to council and the public, given the very unique circumstances of the request. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm happy to take any questions or potentially bring up subject matter experts if I do not have the answers directly available.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Jacobson. Are there any clarifying questions, Mr. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so, I'll just get right to the meeting. So I was approached by some Bell Haven residents who were concerned about the price tag on this and raised the question. I'm sorry, I was approached by some Bell Haven residents who looked at the cost estimate on this and were concerned about it and raised the question, what percentage of Menlo Park residents are currently being served by the service, by these services presently? Because there's some belief that there's, we have a number of non-Menlo Park residents who are regional, regional residents who are using it, who have services available in their city. And the concern was raised that should the city be, in this time of, we're going above and beyond, be providing services to non-Menlo Park residents when they can obtain them in their city? Since this is going to be an added hit to the budget. So I am curious if we know what that percentage looks like.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Mueller. Regarding your question, we've actually did, staff has done some research on that, so we do know our resident and non-resident participation. So currently, right now, at the senior center, we estimate the resident participation to be approximately 60, 65%, I believe is the number. And then the rest would be non-residents, and those come from various jurisdictions, from East Palo Alto, Redwood City, and so forth.
And do we know if then those non-resident jurisdictions, whether or not they have comparable services available in their own cities?
We are aware that in those particular jurisdictions, we do know that there are senior services available. I do not know if they're at the same level that we currently provide in Menlo Park.
Okay, and do, and so this becomes relevant in that when we're looking at these cost estimates, do we know with the, how much substantially these cost estimates would decrease if we had 35% less people participating, or whatever? Or you said, did you say 65% were Menlo Park residents?
Correct.
So if we had 35% less people participating in the services, how much does this cost estimate decrease, do we know?
Given that, first of all, I might just want to say, Councilmember Mueller, right now, currently, because we are a public agency, we don't discriminate between non-residents and residents only in that we do have, through our master fee charges, we do charge non-resident rates for some programs and so forth. The, most of the costs that we're referring to right now that have been promoted for transitional services, I believe, are more fixed costs. They're not operational-related. So if we put $600,000 into portable buildings, for instance, the costs aren't going to go up or lower depending on whom we're serving, whether it's a resident or a non-resident. The operational costs are minimal in terms of the ongoing regular operational costs that are associated with the senior budget. I, hopefully, that might answer the question.
Yeah, I'm not, but I'm not suggesting that we discriminate. What I'm trying to do is get down to a policy discussion, just as we're looking at the cost estimates. Because the questions have come from the public, I'm trying to figure out if we've done the analysis of whether or not there's a difference. I'm not advocating either way yet. I'm just trying to figure out, is there an appreciable difference? So for instance, you know, the size of the portable is different if there's less people, right? And the number of people, and the number of meals you're creating are less. And I'm just wondering, is that something we've taken into account? And also, have we taken, beyond that question, have we taken into account that will prob, that there'll be less people coming here because of convenience issues?
Actually, I think that latter question certainly something, well, we can take all of those questions and do some more diligence on that. We are going with the assumption that we're going to continue to provide the same level of service for the same number of folks. But it goes without saying, depending on where we end up housing those services, we may see a decline in interest in those services. But that's data that we don't have already available.
Okay, and my question is then next to the City Attorney. For those who've raised the issue, we can't say Menlo Park residents only, is that right?
I'm not sure that we can. I mean, I think it's problematic.
Okay. That's all the questions I had for the moment.
You said 60 to 65% of the population who's there. What is the number of, approximately the number of people who are using the Bell Haven senior center services?
Just turning over, we have researched that. I don't have it in my hand right now, but I can probably get that information. You can just wait one moment. In the meantime, are there any other questions that we can handle for you?
Ballpark is fine as well.
So, um...
Yeah, we're speaking about hundreds in total, so...
But not tens and not thousands, so somewhere in the hundreds.
I'm very sensitive to after-school care because, A, it's a matter of safety for children, and it's also the ability of people to be able to go into the workforce and be able to support their families. This is like a really serious life issue. And so when we talk about there might be compromises, I'm just wondering, what compromises are we talking about? They have to walk an extra block because it's a little bit further away? Or they're going to be less hours? How extreme are the compromises that we're talking about? I just wanted to understand what you meant by that.
So currently, right now, we have not identified a replacement space. So right now, the way the service is provided, we have a number of families, for instance, that we serve, that attend Beachwood School, for instance, and because of the proximity of where the youth center is located. If we were to locate the services in another part of the neighborhood, then what we would end up doing is providing more transportation, which we do provide transportation for many of the Tinsley kids that utilize the program that live in the neighborhood. So it's really just going to be determined where we are able to locate the services. So that's primarily what we're referring to.
Does that mean if you can't find a place, they're not going to be providing after-school care for children?
So we have, we have made a commitment, staff have made a commitment, to either identify a space or find a space, whether it's a modular or portable building, again citing it on the city of Menlo Park property.
Okay, good. I just want to make absolutely sure because it's a matter of safety as well as livelihood that we make sure that we don't slack off on helping people take care of their children when they need to work. Thank you.
If there are not, if there are not any more questions from council, go ahead and take public comment. Our first public speaker is Maria Chipress. Maria Chipress?
Este quiero que, por favor, lo hagan como es bien pues como está el espacio para todos porque nos gusta así como está o más grande o más bien.
I would like for the services to stay the way they are because we like them the way they are, or if you can make it bigger because we like it. way they are, or if you can make it bigger, because we like it. We are comfortable the way it is. We want more space for everyone, and we would like more people to come. And that's it, I don't have anybody else to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you for providing public comment.
My name is Maria Elia Armenta. I'm twenty-four years participating in the Center of Menlo Park as a volunteer and also as a member. This senior center in Menlo Park has helped me after, I suffered for many years of anxiety and nerves. I hope that this place gets better, or they turn it better, and that they keep the environment comfortable, safe, and always welcoming, where the welcoming has always been friendly, and that they keep it with a lot of light, a lot of green areas, and thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. The next public speaker is Nora Sines.
My name is Maria Elia Armenta. I have been participating at the center in Menlo Park for twenty-four years, as a volunteer and also as a member. This senior center in Menlo Park has helped me after, I suffered for many years of anxiety and nerves. I hope that this place gets better, or they turn it better, and that they keep the environment comfortable, safe, and always welcoming, where the welcoming has always been friendly, and that they keep it with a lot of light, a lot of green areas, and thank you.
Thank you for your public comment.
Muy buenas noches. My name is Nora. My commentary is, como dijo mi compañera, nosotros en el senior center, yo tengo diez años y yendo al centro.
Good evening, my name is Nora. As my colleague said, I have been going to the center for ten years.
Y he tenido muchos problemas en mi casa, y ahí me siento confortable. Es mi familia.
I have had many problems at my home. There, I feel comfortable. They are my family.
Y si ustedes pues están bien, ¿verdad? Yo respeto todo y con mucho respeto, ¿verdad?, que se merecen. Les, les pudiera sugerir que nos dejaran, ya tienen el croquis, ¿verdad? Pero lo vemos como que es una cajita de fósforos.
Without due respect, because I respect you all, and you guys already have the design, but it looks very small, really tiny, like a, like a box of matches.
Y ahí en eso, no va a poder entrar un compañero con silla de ruedas.
And over there, a, a person with a wheelchair is not going to be able to go in.
Yo quisiera que se tomaran el tiempo para que fueran a ver cómo estamos ahí en el centro, lo que hacemos, las máquinas y todo.
I would like for you all to take your time to go and take a look at how we are right now at the center, the, the different machines that we have.
Las puertas para una seguridad, unas puertas como las que tenemos ahora, en un, en un, un temblor, pongamos.
Okay. And also the doors for, for security and safety, like for example, if there were to be an earthquake.
Para dónde podemos correr, con una puerta pequeña?
Where will we run if the door is too small?
Entonces, como les volvi a repetir, con todo respeto que se merecen, quisiéramos que tomaran en cuenta eso, por favor.
And without due respect, as I said before, please take that, all of that in consideration.
Que hicieran más amplio el centro, no como está, ¿verdad? Pero sí, casi como igual, diría yo.
Two, please expand the center. Maybe not the same that it is right now, but maybe expand it more.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora. Our next public speaker is Ishmael Osiguer.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Maello Osiguer, and I've been volunteering at this gorgeous facility for ten years and every day. So, we really like the center the way it is. We never asked to be moved from there. It was somebody's decision, it wasn't ours. So if it would be possible having the center the way it is, it would be the perfect thing for us. If you can build around the center, that would be wonderful. But if you were to move us to a different location, I mean, once we get back, if it would be the same space that we have, or larger, and with all the classes and everything we have, it would be wonderful. Because without all these classes and everything we have, it's like sending us directly underground. Because we're used to be there and have all these beautiful things. We're a family, being there for over ten years, or maybe twenty, we're blood-related. So, which is asked you to keep us in mind, and if, we're going to be coming back to the new facility, which is one, everything to be the way it is, or better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Sari Conley.
Good evening, councilmembers. Hi, my name is Sincere Conley, and I've been using the senior center for the past year or two. I know we're concerning, we are be, going to be relocated, but I'm hoping that the councilmembers can take in consideration of the architect's design. We need a large facility, especially our cafeteria areas we use for special event. Right now, it's pretty small at this time. We see on the architect's design there that they want to use the cafeteria, they have a garden area, and we wanted to see if they can expand the cafeteria and use some of that garden area to make the cafeteria area larger, so when we have special event, we can hold about up to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty people. Right now, we don't even have that amount of space right now for our special event. And also, including the breathway that we've seen on the architect's design, we see this larger than our area from the senior side, where they plan to build, build. We're wondering if they can use ten feet of the breathway and, because it's already actually wide, if they can use ten feet, they can make the other rooms larger for our special room for yoga, meeting rooms, and computer rooms. We are also asking if it's possible, if they can put everything on one floor that's easy and accessible for many of our seniors. You know, people with disability, you know, have trouble walking. We're concerned about them going upstairs in the elevator, whatever, and may trip or fall, or whatever, you know, for liability issue. We feel that if it's all on one floor, if it's possible that they can have that for our seniors in the future, you know, we are anticipating to see that, that would be larger, because we do have special events there, we want to be able to accommodate those people and our family and our friends and so forth. We're hoping that, that the city manager can consider that, because I told him, I said, "Look, we're not a bunch of midgets. We need larger space," you know, "to accommodate everybody." So I thank you for taking your time to listen to me.
Thank you, Ms. Conley, for your public comment.
My name is Galfira Garcia. Buenas tardes, este, estoy aquí, pienso que mis compañeros ya dijeron todo lo que, por lo que estamos tan preocupados.
Good evening, my name is Galfira Garcia. My friends already said everything that why we're worried.
Porque ahí es nuestra casa, como dijeron. Yo también, este, vivo en un solo cuartito, y, y ahí es mi casa, todo el día.
That place, it's my home. I live in a little tiny room, so that place is where I live the entire day.
Sí, y, y pues lo que les pedimos es que, pues tengan consideración en, en fijarse que, que nos dejen espacios para estar confortables como estamos ahora.
And what I'm, but what I'm asking is for you to keep in, or take in consideration to leave us with the space that we have right now.
Sí, ah, y porque nosotros estamos, este, sujetos a ese lugar, pero, ah, les doy de antemano las gracias por, este, querer mejorar el lugar.
We are all attached to that place, and we are thankful that you guys are trying to better it.
Yeah, muchas gracias, esta...
Thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you for your public comment. Our last public speaker is Cheryl Bems.
Good evening, Cheryl Bems, and respectfully, I'll ask, if I may have an extra minute or two, I will try to translate to Spanish myself. This is going to be an adventure. Me llamo Cheryl Bems, y necesito dos minutos más, porque voy a tratar de decirlo en español también, pero no es mi lengua primera. Está bien? Yeah, gracias. I think it's really, it's, it's very important that we keep in mind the end goal, because right now, we're in this season of what is going to happen, and where am I going to go? But I, I hope that all of us in this room can keep our minds on what we are about to gain. Because not only is it going to be something great for the seniors, it's going to be great for people of all ages. Okay. Pienso que es muy importante que estamos focused, focus, en, en el fin, el goal, porque, I know that's not a word, but you know what I mean. Porque, porque vamos a ganar algo muy increíble, pero vamos a hacer sacrificios mientras estamos esperando. I was just saying, we're going to have to make sacrifices while we're waiting. And la comunicación es muy importante durante este tiempo. Communication is very important during this time. The consul, from the council, the, the staff, y, y el público. Tenemos trabajar juntos, we have to work together. Yo soy una de las personas que trabajando mucho voluntario en este proyecto. I'm one of the people who worked very hard, as it's part of the public, to help bring this project forward, and yo quiero, and I, I want to see it succeed. Yo quiero que prosperar, ¿sí? Y creo que ustedes también, and I believe you all do also, but I think we may need to just step back and, and have a little more transparency and just, and a little more trust. Uh-oh, somebody has to help me. Necesitamos más transp, como said he say, transparency? Sí, transparencia, and trust. I don't, I don't know that, okay. Gracias. And so I just, I just hope that as we move forward, and you're working on your committees and groups and special, whatever you do, that you, that we are transparent. For example, as I look at this card, I notice that, okay, all I have to do is tell you my name. I could be from, I don't know, from over, I don't know, from any country in the world, and you wouldn't know it. I could be representing any organization. But I think it's important for us to even be comfortable in saying who we are, where we reside, and who we represent, okay? Yo creo que es importante para decir quién somos, dónde vivimos, y, y quiénes representamos. Porque es un secreto, es un, una proceso publica, no, this is a public process, no? So, porque no podemos saber esto? La pública, el público necesita saber quién está hablando, and, and what you're thinking. We need to know that. So that's just an aside, but I just hope that we can work together, juntos, to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment.
That was a great effort.
So are there any other questions of staff from the DIES? Oh, Councilmember Carlton.
Are we going into questions, or?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much to Cheryl Bems for, for that great effort. Because, porque yo tengo miedo también a hablar español, pero estoy muy, muy, muy feliz a ver gente latina aquí, y espero que ustedes regresan. I was just saying, I'm happy to see them here, and I hope they come back. Esta carta dice que el traducir no era muy bueno, y lo siento para eso, lo siento porque mi español es bien peor también, pero yo creo que es muy importante. Quiero que, quiero que todos saben que en los corazones queremos hacer cosas mejor para tu, tu, y tu calidad de tu vida es, es muy importante para nosotros. Necesitamos un latino para ser en este grupo, para decisiones. Si hay una persona que quiere ayudarnos, por favor, porque los latinos y toda la gente necesita, están igualmente importantes para esta decisión. I was just saying, I hope, I want them to know that, that they are very important to us, and I hope that one of them would like to be on a steering committee and become more involved to make sure that everyone's needs are met. Quiero que respondas de tus preguntas en esta carta. So I was just saying, I'm, I'm gonna, out of respect for this, I read it really quickly, and I'm going to ask some questions to make sure that some of the questions that were brought up in this are, are clear. Por favor, necesitamos hablar español inglés ahora. So, there seems to be confusion about the Facebook name and why Facebook is, is going forward in this. And for the record, we haven't decided anything for the naming, and Facebook hasn't asked anything with regard to changing the names, correct? Okay. Now, when the mayor and I were, were working together on this, we recognized that the kitchen, the food for the seniors, is very important, and we want to make sure that that continues. I see in the letter that they feel they have the finest kitchen staff to make fresh, healthy food. Will we be able to provide healthy food and have that as a continuing service? Because it is important to make sure... Because it is important to make sure that we have food available and not slack on that service. Is that still something that we can address and we can make sure stays for the people that need it?
Let's see. So as was, the goal for sure is providing healthy food. As was mentioned earlier, exactly how that is provided is going to be determined as we go through this process of identifying the specific sites. But yes.
So we don't know exactly where or how, but it's going to continue that we, so I just wanted people to understand that that's why we have that as the critically listed thing, that we're going to make sure continues. Why is Facebook not hiring people from the community? I don't know. We have to ask Facebook. I know it's something that has been encouraged, and that's kind of another topic for another place. But Facebook, different community centers, all moving to the new building. They ask about parking and moving things together into one building. It's my understanding that this is coming about because the city and Facebook and the people that have been working on this project so far want to provide better facilities, larger facilities. And I specifically asked because I know there are people in the community that are in wheelchairs. It will be ADA, wheelchair accessible. Making sure that I'm not making assumptions. It is going to be larger than the services and it will be ADA compliant for people?
Let's see. So I'll take the second one. Definitely will be ADA compliant. The first question about larger, the design that we're working within, and that's kind of was articulated in the offer that Facebook made, is that it's a replacement facility. And so a replacement facility within the environmental review that needs to be conducted means that the building does have some size constraints. So we're looking at something that's a little bit larger to accommodate the library component, but if the building gets much larger than what's currently contemplated, then we're into a different level of environmental review, a different timeline, and all, then that would need to be revisited. So some of the requests about increasing the size, we would need to kind of work on the specifics of the design. The goal could be achieved of the, kind of, some of the characteristics of the space that we articulated about it, comfortable, welcoming, ADA compliant, but there are constraints about how large of a building we're looking at.
It's not going to be smaller. It will be larger. We just don't know how that design's working through.
How large, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Because I want people, as Ms. Bems said, to understand, we're honestly trying to make this better. We're trying to provide better facilities for people in the long term. And we're also very worried in making sure that we provide as many services as possible in the same way as possible to not impact people's lives unnecessarily in the process of providing something that hopefully will be really beautiful and really provide fantastic services for decades to come. I don't, I'm trying to think if there's something else from this letter. If anyone wants to get together with us, I'm happy to. We've worked very hard to try and make sure, as staff has, that we're going to try and find a place to keep services going that are critical services. Yes, you know, we're probably going to lose the pool and some of the exercise and some of the classes, but the idea is that we make a couple of sacrifices now so that we can have something so much better in the future. And I honestly do hope that someone from the Latino community also will join us in the steering committee to make sure that everyone's needs, that everyone feels heard.
Are there any follow-up questions from anyone else on council? Vice Mayor Combs.
Oh, one announcement before we go to that, is that Councilmember Mueller has left ill, which is why he will no longer be sitting here with us this evening. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so generally, I'm supportive of the direction and action that the staff is requesting here tonight. You know, I think to sort of, to continue what others have said tonight, this is all about a process of something that ultimately will be, will be better for all stakeholders involved. And so, and I think that there are Herculean efforts being made to, in the interim, keep as many of the services going as possible at a level commensurate with what they're being offered now. So, and again, I'm comfortable with the kitchen and game room, as I understand it, being priorities, but to, but not necessarily required. I do know that there are lots of sort of food delivery options that the city could possibly utilize without a full-service kitchen, though accepting that that is the priority, but there may be conditions in which that just can't be, can't be delivered. And again, like I say, the in-game being that, like, the food services will be provided, and that's not negotiable. I'm okay with the million-dollar appropriation. I'm okay with the waiving of bidding. What I do have a question about is the increasing of the city manager's authority from $75,000 to $500,000 with regards to costs as related to this project. Give me some understanding of why couldn't that come back to council and why we would sort of, since this is something that, there's going to be lots of eyes on, and of which we up here are going to be ultimately fundamentally accountable for, and it is not an insignificant amount of money. I have a great deal of hesitation deferring that to staff when I'm going to be the one that's going to be getting the calls, and we up here are going to be getting the calls, if that is all sort of put towards some interim service or interim option that people in the community have lots of questions and concerns about. So it certainly could come back to council. That's not out of the, that's not unreasonable. It's a matter of timeliness is the main concern there. Given the length of time it will likely take to prepare a site or number of sites, this decision really needs to be made probably within the next month, month and a half at the absolute latest. So it could come back to council as long as it came back within that timeframe. Thanks.
So I have a follow-up question to Vice Mayor Combs. So what do you think is the minimum amount of time that you would need in order to bring an item back if we approved everything that you're recommending except the signing authority? So that it would actually happen in phases? So once every two weeks, twice a month, once a week?
I would say the difficulty with that is that I'm not certain that it could be done in phases. Essentially, the mix of services likely needs to be identified in total, and so that timeline really does need to be in the next month, month and a half. So I mean, it could come back in phases until that time. I would say that given the publication, we're likely to, the publication deadlines for staff reports, it's likely not going to make the two weeks. It would be more like the Thursday before slip sheet type thing every time.
I just have a question for, I've already heard Vice Mayor Combs' opinion. Does Councilmember Carlton, Councilmember Nash, what are your thoughts about the signing authority?
I agree with what's been said.
I agree with what's been said. I'm thinking, does it need to come back for our approval or does it come back as an information item saying, "We're going to spend this much money on A, B, C, D," and either it gets on consent agenda or information or something like that so that it can, I don't want to slow things down if it's going to prevent the services that people need, but I also want to make sure that we're using fiscal responsibility and making sure that the optics are there, that people know what the money's being spent on. So whether we see it before or after, whether it's in consent or information, it's good to make sure that it's public, what's being spent and how. I don't know your thoughts about that.
Councilmember Nash.
Well, there was a, in the report, it said that there would be a follow-up to council with whatever was being spent. I guess I am still, would prefer to maintain the authority over the 500, over the actual payment, although I'm concerned that we don't have lengthy staff reports and that it doesn't become burdensome. It's something really where we just, is there something where we could just see it and not have a lengthy staff report, but do something just short of actually just giving blanket approval?
We could. I think one alternative is if the council were open to a 24-hour noticed meeting, special meeting.
I would agree to that.
That sounds fine.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Councilmember Carlton.
I mean, as I said, whether it's an information item, whether it's consent, I agree with that it causing, I just don't want it to cause more staff work and slow things down.
And I guess perhaps if we start down this path and it does not make sense, we could at that point give approval.
I guess I would just underscore that the staff put this alternative together to eliminate barriers to expeditious execution. And so, but we're certainly amenable to bringing it back in whatever form the council wants. So going from $75,000 to a million is kind of that sticker shock. Well, you know, it's $500,000. So $500,000. Are you, do we feel that it needs to be raised? Does it help to be raised a little for certain things or? Shall we just have it report back? I'm just trying to throw something out to help.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with the sort of 24-hour notice on a meeting. Again, it's sort of more about accountability. Obviously, I don't, I trust the city manager, but it is, I think, again, there is obviously a significant amount of community interest and involvement, a significant amount of scrutiny. And so I just want to make sure that at every part along the process that, you know, the elected officials are giving it the scrutiny and being the decision-makers. And so, because they are the ones, like I said, that are accountable. And so, and I do think, like I said, it's an important project and it's a not insignificant amount of money for a city of our size.
Councilmember Nash.
I have a couple other questions, and that is, first of all, for drop-in fees and fitness, are the fees different for what people are currently experiencing or what they're currently charged at Bell Haven and what they, can we have something comparable if they were to go to Burgess?
Drop-in, Councilmember Nash, I think the drop-in fees right now are $2, I think, for basketball or.
Well, are they comparable at Burgess?
They are comparable, yes.
Perfect. Okay. And then I've been asked to see whether we can hold off relocating the senior center until after the holidays and so wait till January and so that the senior center with, the seniors can still have their holiday activities in their home.
So through the mayor, is that then a question for staff or?
Yes.
Okay. So in terms of the, I think I articulated last Wednesday at a meeting at the senior center that the target date that we're working through is the middle of October. There's some flexibility into the middle of November. If there's a request from the council to keep the facility open through the holidays, so I would interpret that to be, when is the, what is this?
Second or third week of December.
So that'd be about the third week of December. At whatever point in time, the services, the programs, and then there's a time to actually start the process of decommissioning the facility, properly emptying the facility to be able to then turn it over for the abatement, demo, construction. So we could look into that in terms of the overall timeline. I'd like to be able to do that and kind of report back.
Or just realize that would be a desirable outcome.
Right, yeah. And if that outcome could happen, happy to accommodate that. We just want to make sure that we were trying to comply with the overall schedule.
Understood. So that, just if we could have that as a desirable outcome to have the facility open through the holidays.
We can look into that.
Thank you. And then another question is, I guess I'm, what do you think is the likelihood that we could actually have more of the recreation classes, community special events? Right now it says reduced level. Presumably, we'll be trying to accommodate more of the classes. Definitely, I understand how a kiln is not anything that's in the works, but there's, I'm actually meeting with one of the instructors tomorrow, who I've known for a long time, and I know that there's a strong desire to continue the classes, as you heard, as we all heard tonight. They're very important. Is there anything we can do to further accommodate beyond what's currently going on? And what would that take to further, to make sure that we're accommodating the classes that are currently at the center?
I would say that the most important thing is to be able to get direction from the council tonight so that we can start the process of identifying the sites. Because until we in earnest start looking at the sites that we can secure, we don't know for sure. So that's the best thing that we could do is just embark on the next phase of looking at what sites are actually available to provide the service.
So I absolutely agree with that and just would like to put in a plug that the more classes we can accommodate, obviously, that's incredibly desirable.
So I think our, the way we've been approaching this is, generally speaking, the greater, the closer to the current service levels that we can get, the better, and we will seek out those wherever possible. And as long as it's not prohibitively expensive, that's what we're looking for.
Thank you so much. I am really amazed at how much you've pulled together in such a short period of time. Very much appreciated.
Are there any other questions from council?
We haven't, we haven't, we, it's not official yet, but we will be putting together a group, like a steering committee or a group to help provide feedback as we move forward. And so if someone would like to participate in that while people are here, I just wanted to let you know. Si hay una persona en serio que quiere subir en un grupo para decisiones en la ciudad, por favor hables conmigo o con la alcaldesa. Bienvenido. Necesitamos más personas. Gracias.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Just to follow up on the interim services, thank you, Councilmember Nash, for making the suggestion about keeping services open until the end of the year, if possible. My concerns are being able to fulfill the interim services at a level that would be comparable to what our seniors are experiencing now. My second concern is the emotional part of this process of a transition. I know, and I'll speak for myself, I do not have any background in social work or psychology. I know, and I'll speak for myself, I do not have any background in social work or psychology, but I know that this has to be hard on our senior community, and I know that I haven't consulted anyone about it. And so I'm not sure if that's the direction that actually needs to come from the council to staff, that maybe that's something we need to look into. This transition period, had somebody asked me on Sunday, says, "No one asked us if we wanted to move." And it's true. I never went to the seniors and said, "Well, do you want to move? Do you want a new facility?" It was more assumed that who wouldn't want one? And so that was where, the place that I was operating from. So in the interest of building more transparency and trust between our community and the city and the city council, I would like to see us do a little better. So I do appreciate the, our city council addressing that, especially when it came to the signing authority for transparency and trust. It's better for us to see each piece as we move forward, because that is the goal. We do want to get to that end. I also wanted to thank Ishmael, and forgive me if I say your name incorrectly, Assegia. Ishmael is the writer of the letter and was able to acquire dozens of signatures. And if you haven't had an opportunity to read the letter, there are some in the back in the binder. It's very important for us to have everybody's side in this, because everybody is a part of this process. We cannot do any of this without our community. The community can't do it without staff. Staff, we all need each other. So we need to definitely make sure that we're making a better effort to provide, to build trust and also to demonstrate transparency. So in saying all of that, I definitely support allocating a million dollars to provide for interim services, and I believe in addition to the remainder of the library project funds. I believe that's a part of it as well. I would like to see us provide as much of the services that are now for our seniors and for our youth, for both. So I'm hoping that that is going to be possible. And I believe there were two other parts to the request, the recommendation.
Yes, so the recommend, there are three recommendations outlined at the beginning of the staff report. So I think the motion would be items one, two, and three, and then you wouldn't be taking actions on four and five. So it's approving the interim service levels for the Bell Haven Youth Center, Anetta Harris Community Center, and the Menlo Park Senior Center, provided during construction of a new facility, as outlined in table two, with the goal of maintaining as many of the services as possible for both seniors and youth. Two, appropriate the million dollars to the Bell Haven Community Center and Library Project to provide the interim services at the council-approved service levels for up to 30 months. And three, waive the purchasing requirements to secure facilities, goods, and services required to provide interim services promptly. And then authorizing the city manager to move forward, but bring any final action in excess of her signing authority to the council, including bringing that back at a special meeting if necessary. And I don't know if there's anything else to add from... I mean, we can pull up the list. So just so I understand, you consolidated four and five into a new item four that at a certain level... Authorized the city manager to, within her authority, to bring back anything in excess of her authority to the city council at a special meeting if necessary. Okay. Within, a special meeting can be held within 24 hours? That's the requirement, yeah.
Excuse me, Ms. Herron.
Yeah, so just if we go through, whether we're looking at the slide or the staff report, and I think what the city attorney was going through with the staff report, we just want to make sure that it may be best if people do indeed look at the staff reports. I'm not sure if the council members can pull up the staff report.
Yes.
So we just want to make sure that in item one, the service levels, I know that there's some, I'll say, hopes that were expressed and we're all hoping for it, but the, what we're focused in on is table two of the staff report. For those, that's what summarizes the target service levels. I'll say that those are the minimum service levels that we're targeting so that we can then embark on trying to find spaces that can accomplish those service levels. If we can find spaces within this budget amount that provide a higher level of service, we'll definitely do that. So I just want to make sure that we're focused in on table two.
Yes. We are looking at table two. I have a question. So level one, tier one service is a given, that we would automatically do. So if there's potential for tier two and tier three?
Sorry, let's see. The automatics are still dependent on us finding a space. So we do need to embark on finding spaces. If we find the spaces, we'll deliver the tiers that are identified here. If we have challenges finding the spaces, we're going to, what that will mean is we're going to report back to the city council and say, "We had no success finding spaces. We need to figure out a different way of trying to solve this problem." So we would report back and say, "We need a different direction." So that's, I just want to be clear about the automatic. The automatic is, we still need to find the space. So then the second, second part of your question, though, was about the tiers two and three. Yeah, if we can find a space that can bump something up to, from a tier two to a tier one, and it's within the budget amount that we just identified, we would, of course, try to strive for the higher level of service if that's possible based off the space and the cost.
At this moment, is it, is it still possible to actually move the senior community meeting rooms to a tier two instead of a tier three? Still contingent upon what you just said a few moments ago, as far as being able to find space?
Just making sure. Is it community meeting rooms?
And then I have a question while you figure that out for Derek. What's the capacity of the cafeteria? Is it 110 people, 120 people?
So my staffs here probably knows this better than mine with Vida's here, but I, if I'm, I think it's around 115 is the number, I'm looking back. Oh, wow, I got it. It's about 115.
Okay. Thank you.
May I have a follow-up question on that?
Yes.
We have meeting rooms in the police substation. Can, can they not use, can we not allocate those to the seniors during this time so that they have a place?
So one of the things that we can do, one of the things that we're looking at is a mix of variety of spaces. So if we can't accommodate meeting spaces at the location that we're looking at, to look at other variety of meeting spaces to address the question you mentioned. The reason why meeting rooms were down there at suspended and three is because we feel like there is other options that may be available for community meetings. But it's not to say that if our center, like in the evening, we want to have a community meeting, or a member of the public wants to use the facility, we can't make it available. It's just that we're trying to prioritize the services that we're providing versus an outside group who simply wants to use a space.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah, can I just, I would like to clarify that the timeline, as we currently understand it, is one of the major constraints for us. So we will absolutely do our best to move everything from, everything at a reduced level up to a current level, to the extent that that's possible within what we can look at. But our major concern, unless given other explicit direction, is to aim for these service levels in the timeline that we identified, and at the same time, keep looking. But if you would like us to move something from where it's currently recommended, we do need that direction so that we can go out and make it happen under the current timeline to meet the construction time.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. I have a follow-up question. The million dollars that's being allocated for the interim services, that's for the 30 months, or is that just to get things started?
The intent is for that to be the entire interim service timeline. So whether that's 24 months or 30 months or thereabouts, yes, the entire time.
Okay. And the maximum time being 30 months, and the million dollars is spent at the 20 months, you would come back to council and ask for additional funds?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up question. I know it's not detailed here, but at this time, would you need council direction in order to include additional shuttle services? So if seniors are being shuttled over to the main campus here at Burgess?
So the intent was to provide any service necessary to continue providing the services. So if that means that they're held at a different place and there's no parking, for instance, and transportation would be necessary, that would be part of what we intended to include.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I just, I am uncomfortable with the reduced level for senior rec classes and special events, but I understand that that may be the only way we can move, so just that you understand that once more. Thank you.
So are we ready to make a motion?
I move the motion as outlined by the city attorney.
Ms. Herron, did you type up the new motion?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent. I actually should have made this announcement while the seniors were here, even though they're already aware of it. I wanted to remind the public that the seniors are having their 20th annual Black History Month Celebration and Gospel Festival. It is a great opportunity to visit the senior center and see how they enjoy the space during special events. And of course, the doors are always open, so you can visit there anytime, I believe, between nine and three. That is this Friday, February 28th, at 11:30. I also would like to announce a special city council meeting on April 14th. And we took our meeting out of order, so if I seem a little unorganized, it's because I am at the moment. Are there any reports from city council members, city manager, or city attorney?
We're doing reports.
So well, we will come back to this one, since no one is prepared. I would also like to announce that we are doing our annual recruitment for city advisory bodies through April 3rd. So please encourage your neighbors to apply. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff, or a member of the public requests that the item be discussed or continued to a later date. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar? And we did hear one earlier. So are there any council members that want to pull any of the consent calendar items? Councilmember Carlton?
F1 and F6.
And we were asked by the public to pull F5. Councilmember Nash?
I just have one brief clarification on F4, so I'd like to pull that briefly.
And I would like to pull F7.
Okay.
Forgive me. And it's, and I have a short comment. So we have F1 left.
No, I pulled F1.
Oh, you pulled F1, so we have F6. F2 and F3 are the remaining consent items. I think someone pulled three. I'll pull F3.
So we're just going to take up F2 right now?
Yes, so if I can have a motion and a second on item F2 only. The motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent. We'll take F1 first.
F1's just me being crisscrossy. It talks about council discussed priorities, and it just lists transportation. Transportation is such a huge area. I was just going to say transportation and then adding quotes. We talked about parking, we talked about the flow of traffic, and we talked about the safe routes of school. Just clarifying, that's what's included in traffic, if everyone's fine with that.
Where, where are you in the, coming in?
See, under C1, it talks about...
What page number?
Page one, F1.8.
Thank you.
I was just fleshing out transportation a little bit, because we talked about the flow of transportation, the parking, and the safe routes to school.
I believe that item is, wasn't that on the last council agenda? There was a printout of the city council goals, what we discussed individually as a council?
Yes, there was, the staff's notes was, will be attached, as well as the PCRC notes. Those will be attached to the final minutes.
Okay.
If there's any additions to the physical minutes themselves, I'll just need direction from, or in consensus from the council.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that sometimes we have these one words that are loaded, and then people come back later and either, you know, staff interprets a word one way or we interpret another, and I was just going in for clarity. But it's not life or death.
I actually have a question about the public comments and just about the follow-up letter to the fire protection district. Mr., the President Jones brought in a letter that was directed to the mayor, the city manager, and to our police chief. And so I just wanted to get support from the council to actually reply to the letter. There were eight priorities from the fire district.
So would you like us to bring that back as an agenda item for your consideration?
Would you all like to have it as an agenda item or just to have staff follow up?
I think it can come as a consent item.
Consent item's fine, or information item, either one.
So do you have a preference? Do you have a preference? That's fine. Consent is fine. Thank you. Did you have anything else on F1?
Mayor Taylor, for clarification, am I changing the minutes? Or are we just going to retain the attachments?
Or are we just going to retain the attachments? No, we will keep the attachment, but can we add, would councilmember Carlton suggest it? Thank you.
So should we vote on that now, or do you want to vote it all, and all of it as we go through?
Hopefully, we can get through it all. Let's do it all at once, wouldn't that be easier? Hello, Mr. Piggelo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To councilmember Carlton's clarification on F1.8 in the meeting minutes, it is true that the council spoke of a number of issues related to transportation. The council also spoke to a number of issues related to climate, housing, and the other items listed there. So if we're going to go into specificity, if the council desires that, we may need to go back and look at the other topics that were discussed that evening.
I brought it up because it says, for example, it talks about housing and then Zero Homeless Initiative. Some of the other ones are fleshed out to a degree. As I said, I just bring up that one with transportation, because it does tend to be a loaded topic that people, I think has a higher chance of someone interpreting one way or another, where homeless or housing is not going to be interpreted, I think, in a different way, in the same way that transportation might. But I'll leave that to colleagues.
I thought the idea of having the notes attached to the minutes would be certainly satisfactory to me, because that actually gives much more detail.
Yeah, well, that would be anyway, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Right, the next item is F3. Just checking. And item F3, I just wanted to, I'm on the operation of emergency services, and we created a subcommittee to look at the policy, because the policy here for the agreement is from 2014, and so it'll be updated soon. And that's all I wanted to add. But Chief, it's nice to see you. F4?
So on F4, I just wanted to add one word, if possible, and that's on the designating Kara Silver as the city attorney, actually have it say designated Kara Silver as the interim city attorney.
Okay, you're referring to the background portion of the staff report?
Correct. It's on page F4.1.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and it is correct in the resolution, which is, or excuse me, in the action item that we're asking you to take, and it is listed correctly in the contract as well.
Perfect.
Yes.
I'm all set with that, then.
Are there any follow-up questions? The next item is F5. Hello.
Good evening.
This item was pulled partially as a request to Ms. Winkler, and I'm looking for the comments. I wasn't sure if you were able to catch any of her questions that she asked.
The gondola?
No. What she, that, and then, but she made, she asked a couple of questions before that, didn't she? That's why you wrote down this gondola.
Regarding the Spear Group?
Yes. She asked about transportation options, what other transportation options were available, and I know I'm not giving you the full context of her statement, but that is the specific piece that I wrote down.
I think if I remember correctly, she was mentioning what transportation options did exist, but then she referred to more of the underserved Bellhaven neighborhood, which then alluded to the, which then alluded to the gondola concept. So that's why I was a little confused by her question, too, was she was trying to say, if she was trying to address possible options, or options we already currently have.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I'm not, I can't answer that question for you. So I just wanted to chime in and say, I think I, like a lot of us up here, respect former Mayor Winkler's involvement, engagement in the city, and in her insight and in council, I think, to all of us. I would like to go on the record and say, I am not in support of any gondola effort or any staff time being devoted to it. I think, I, you know, taking her seriously and literally, I just don't think it is viable and a realistic option as far as looking at transportation options. And so I did want to go on record, I think we all are very respectful of her engagement and contributions to the city. But I just want to make it clear, I don't think that that's something that the city should spend much time trying to study.
Councilmember Nash, did you have a question?
I actually think that this is coming back to us as a study session.
Yes, so we'll actually be coming back to you in about a month on the 24th. So steer group will actually be here in person to present some, I know there might be some questions about the streetlight data, so they actually give a presentation on that to elaborate. And we'll also be coming to you as a council to make some decisions on how to narrow the options that we'll present on possible concepts for transportation management associations here in Mellow Park.
Very good. Just reading the STEAR report, there was heavy emphasis on what we can do with walking and biking in the responses from the businesses, which I did not see reflected in the report itself, and would like to just make sure that we don't lose those options, please.
Okay, noted.
And then, just generally, I'm very interested in accountability and how we, how there's accountability to make sure that the participation, how do we measure success? Because I believe that the goal, in one place it said 20% trip reduction, in the other place it said 25% trip reduction, but either way, how do we know whether we're achieving that?
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. I do not have the report in front of me. Since there was a focus on biking and walking, how is our Vision Zero policy being implemented in this process with the TMA?
Good evening, councilmembers. Nikki Nagaya, excuse me, interim public works director. So the feasibility study on the Transportation Management Association will provide an overview of options of how we would form, govern, and see a TMA support itself over time. It can, through this process, the steer group, through the feedback we've gotten from the business community, can absolutely identify areas to prioritize in terms of programs that the TMA could run in the future. And if there's an emphasis on walking and biking, some of the things they may recommend are programs that would then support people being able to walk and bike. That said, they will not give us an infrastructure plan in order to identify all the city needs for projects going forward. That's being done through a separate but parallel process for the Transportation Master Plan. So I think if there are infrastructure needs, and I would put a commute gondola in that same bucket, if there's interest in studying it further, that should really be looked at through the Transportation Master Plan. But the feasibility study for the Transportation Management Association options will absolutely consider all the city policies, like Vision Zero. It just won't give us recommendations for infrastructure projects going forward.
And with the upcoming study session, is that going to be more around the Transportation Master Plan? Or is that just TMA or?
Yes, so the upcoming item, coming before you on March 24th, will be focused on the Transportation Management Association formation next step, so that the TMA, the Transportation Master Plan, just for clarity, will, is currently in the final stages of development. We expect to have a draft released in the next few months, and that will come back then to the council ultimately for approval after going through a couple other steps previous to that.
Okay, I appreciate you letting me know. One of my concerns with Vision Zero, we adopted it almost five years ago, and so just looking at accountability and being able to measure what we're doing, have we done anything towards meeting the Measure Zero, our Measure Zero policy, our Measure Zero goal, I'm sorry, Vision Zero? And you don't have to answer this, this can be answered in the TMA, but just to let you know, kind of what I'm thinking about, is just having a policy in existence that, what have we done to move towards it? How, what action items have we taken to actually meet our own policy?
Yeah, so I think that would, so that would likely be something that we could bring back to you in a separate agenda item to report out on the progress related to collision reductions in the city and infrastructure projects that have been implemented since the general plan was updated and Vision Zero was adopted in 2016. There will be a lot to digest on the item for the Transportation Management Association on its own, and so we want to be sensitive to how much information we pile on any one agenda item, but we can definitely bring that back.
We appreciate it. But just for clarity, to make sure with the Vision Zero, that it includes all seven E's, the essentials, evaluation and planning, engineering, enforcement, education, encouragement, engagement, and equity? Just making sure that that, all those pieces will be a part of it.
So we can cross-check. I can't recall the specific references in the circulation element policy off the top of my head, but there were definitely references to the E's. I just don't remember how many, if it was six or seven or eight, that were identified in the policy language.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions?
I'd just like to make another comment and push again for the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and realizing that it doesn't come out of the TMA. But the TMA, while it's looking at the rail, buses, shuttles, it's missing a big piece of the answers that the businesses gave. Tarleton, Zobrato, Stanford, Facebook, they're all mentioning that they're, one of the biggest challenges is the bicycle and walking, and that they'd like to see more efforts there. So I'm concerned that we're missing that piece if we're just focusing on the rail, buses, and shuttles.
Yeah, you make a great point, and actually, in talking to a few community members, they have mentioned quote-unquote "walk to work," and it can be a natural offset or offshoot of our safe route to school initiative, which we're already kind of mapping out safer bike routes and walking routes throughout the city, so it can just be kind of translated over to actually focus more on the businesses instead of schools.
Okay. So are there any follow-up questions on F5? So we can move to F6.
Mayor Taylor, we do have a public comment on F6.
Okay. Ms. Adina Levin?
Good evening, councilmembers. And I can comment now or comment after city council have asked questions. Being on the Complete Streets Commission, we had a presentation on the item, so if there's anything that comes up, I may share thoughts. I didn't come prepared to say anything in particular about this, other than the fact that over the last year or two, with the level of staffing and also the labor shortages with the drivers relating to our housing crisis, it's been really hard to have a really effective program. And I would like to encourage the city to, you know, retain the focus on keeping effective shuttle routes and making them better, you know, as we're looking at, you know, whether we're looking at transportation demand and management, or we're looking at the Climate Action Plan, and wanting people to have ways of getting around without driving cars and participating in traffic congestion and adding pollution, this is a good thing to have, acknowledging that it's been a difficult couple of years.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any questions from any councilmembers?
Yeah, I pulled this because I wanted to bring a couple of things into people's awareness, and I think it is really important to have these shuttles. I know that two people in my neighborhood are elderly and had their family take their car away, for good reason, and they depend on this to get to their doctor, to get to their hairdresser, to get to the store. You know, these are critical things for people, and I don't mean to make light of that. I do want to point out that the reason why these aren't as successful, why we don't have as many people riding as we might like, is because of the disruptions. There's a driver shortage. The MV transportation, the vendor, is, I don't know why. I don't know if it's incompetence or just the market, but they are not providing drivers so that the buses are not consistent, so people don't depend on them. And unfortunately, we can't even fire them and hire someone else, because it's a JPA, and we have to get everyone else involved in this. But I want, first of all, to bring it to people's attention, that it's not that possibly we don't know. We don't, it's possible that more people would use these, and they would be more successful, if we actually had drivers running them dependently, and we actually had a service that works. And it makes me very annoyed to see this much money coming from CCAG and all these different groups, and we're, it's, this is serious money. We're putting into a very good solution that's really needed, and it's failing because of one fault, and that is their inability to find good drivers, so far as we know. And that upsets me. The next thing is, if there really is a driver shortage, and we really aren't able to run this as a viable, reliable service that people can use, we're, according to this, $74 for one person to go someplace? If we want to reduce traffic and reduce greenhouse gases, even many buses driving around is not the way to address this. I can take a taxi from my house to the airport for less than that. Where are these people, you know, these are not acceptable numbers. This is not financial responsibility, and this is not something that's helping the environment. This is ridiculous. And so I'm going to bring this forward to CCAG, and I'm going to speak to some of the other people. Right now, we're not going to, we're not going to solve this now, but I'm just bringing it to your attention, that this is broken. This is not okay. And we need to do something about this to make it better. And I realize it might not be done here, we might have to go up the food chain, because we're getting these grants to do this. But maybe we need sometimes to go up the food chain to make sure that something is actually running effectively and efficiently, because the way it is right now, it's not reliable for the people using it, and it's not meeting the goals for the environment and for the goals that we have. So I'm not saying kill it now, I'm saying, excepted I approve this, but this needs to get fixed in the future. And I'm happy to work with anybody who wants to address this, and that's why I believe Starla sent out an email. You sent that to all of us? That's why you got the email about this, is because I was squawking about this this morning. So I'm going to look into it, because I find this really not acceptable. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you, councilmember Carlton. I agree with what you're saying. And I guess I'm disappointed that we're getting a report that for a grant that was supposed to be put in two days ago, we're getting it now, there's no availability to, there's no ability to change it at all at this point, so I definitely want to move it forward. We need the funds, we need the shuttles. But I would like to see whether, as part of the grant, we can, what can we modify if, as we look into various solutions and doing better with the shuttles? Can we, are we able to change routes? Are we able to, what can we tweak? Are we able to, what can we tweak within the grant guidelines? Because this is a two-year grant, and I would like this to come forward much earlier next time. I realize we have tremendous staff constraints, so I understand that piece of it, but this seems like, right now, we're being asked to approve a two-year grant or to support a two-year grant that seems like there's a lot that needs to be worked on here. And one of the things that I'd like to see is some numbers in reports. Right now, we have no idea how many, we have passengers per service hour, we have no idea how many people are actually riding these shuttles. And it would be nice to know the numbers of people riding the shuttles, the numbers of where people are riding, and I think just generally more information. And a piece of this that I believe is, well, first of all, the report assumes that we're going to be getting more shuttle drivers. Is there any certainty to that? Can we actually, do we know that? Do we know why we're not able to get shuttle drivers? And I know, I know you've been working very hard on that, and it's just, do we know for the next two years whether or not we'll be able to get, have better luck with shuttle drivers?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to process this all because I want to answer your questions and also Councilmember Carlton's questions too, so sorry if I'm going all over the place. So kind of answered your question and hers earlier, so just as a little background, we're part of a joint contract with Commute.org and also Caltrain for operating shuttles in Samhail County. So as part of that joint contract, we all operate, or we all join with MV Transportation to provide our shuttles. And unfortunately, they've had driver issues since October 2017, and it's been a while, as Ms. Levin has said too. It's not uncommon in a sense, unfortunately. You can see that Samtrans itself as an organization also has driver shortages and throughout the Bay Area as a result of just all the wealth disparity in a sense that's causing these issues. So it's not uncommon, unfortunately, but it is an issue that has affected a few of our shuttle routes, unfortunately. Let's see, yeah. As part of it, to your question just now, we believe we have some good news that the driver levels are stabilizing a bit, so we're working to reinstate some suspended service. We recently brought back the second vehicle on our Marsh Shuttle, and we're hoping to resume the second shuttle that goes out to Bellhaven, also the one that was suspended entirely to Sharon Heights in about a month or so. Fingers crossed, hopefully, sorry. But that's some good news, and hopefully because of that, we're starting to actually roll out some new advertising and marketing. So I'm not sure if you've seen or not, we've deployed a new sign and kind of shuttle stop at the library here as a kind of a mock-up testing ground. So I actually brought some displays here. So if you've seen before, around town, we have shuttle signs for each particular route. This one is a generic one in a sense, but you can add specific decals, and it has kind of a refreshed look, create that new branding. And as part of the community shuttle routes that go to Bellhaven and eventually Sharon Heights, we are implementing larger displays to make it very apparent and visible and just to offer additional information. So if you've ever been to Stanford, you've seen these kind of rolly, rotating type of schedule holders. They're essentially 22 by 24 sized sheets of paper, so essentially we'll be upgrading from our current eight and a half by 14 sized ones. So, sorry, it's a little wrinkled, but essentially we can offer a larger map, larger information, additional things such as transit connectivity, medical destinations, and just having a picture of the shuttle, which actually would help them identify what they're looking for. So there's all these marketing efforts, it's just that unfortunately, over the last couple of years, to be honest, we haven't marketed as much because we didn't want to market a service that could potentially not live up to the standards of the riders, and we lose trust in that regard. So we just didn't want to rock the boat too much. So I think that answers those questions. And then in regards to your question about why we didn't come to council earlier, I apologize for that. The application of a call for project was released only in mid-January, so it put a low constraint on us as staff to try to get something out sooner. And we at least let the CCAG and TA staff know early on that we may be delayed with the resolution, and they were happy to hear that we were actually being proactive in that regard. Let's see. And then in regards to your earlier question about the $74 shuttle, unfortunately, it's just putting riders on the vehicle. So at that point in time, we had suspended the vehicle or the shuttle routes out to Sharon Heights in September 2018, and in the two months that led up to that, in that fiscal year, fiscal year 1819, that's the numbers we're drawing from. And unfortunately, at that time, because of driver shortages and just the way the drivers are acting, they weren't going to schedule, they were just kind of leaving earlier, so they were losing a lot of riders in that regard, and that's what just obviously drove up the costs and all that.
Great. So for that particular route, it was operational for a few months and operating very inconsistent, and that's why you see such a high cost per passenger, because we never had a consistent service in order to get the riders to help drive that cost per passenger down. We would expect, as service is reinstated, if the driver levels are successful and stabilizing in the next few months, we would not look to operate a service at that cost going forward. So we're really, that service was not in operation long enough in order to get the riders to see that cost per passenger go down. So that's something that we'll definitely want to track closely, because we agree that that is a very high number. And you can see that it's much higher than the service benchmark that Samtrans provides for the shuttle services, which is $10 per passenger. So we're much closer to meeting those targets for our other routes, but that one in particular was problematic, and that's part of the reason why with the driver shortage, Samtrans eliminated the driver for that route because it was not performing, because it hadn't been operational long enough to be successful.
And to add to that point, you were mentioning about tweaking routes. So that route was inefficient in a sense, that we sent on a one-way loop throughout the city, going down Santa Cruz and Sand Hill to kind of make that western loop. But in this iteration, which we will bring changes in spring of 2020 in about a month or so hopefully, is that we would actually write it down Santa Cruz bidirectionally. So that way, it would serve more of a residential part of Menlo Park, and in addition, that it would be more efficient. So that way, by making those tweaks, hopefully you'll get more riders and actually help drive down those costs.
Yeah. So you see why this is laughable, right? Because we're talking about saving greenhouse gases and traffic, and yet we have empty buses driving around town because we don't market them and because they don't show up half the time because they're not staffed. So we have these phantom buses that nobody knows are there, driving around, and then we wonder why two people take them. I mean, my level of frustration is only tempered by my sense of humor at how insane this is. We can put people in Ubers for less than this in many cases. And then it's not just this. I'm not even sure if this even takes into account the cost of maintaining the vehicles, parking the vehicles, all the opportunity cost associated with that. So it makes me sad because we don't know if there's ridership. We really don't, because this is not a test. This was kind of bizarre at best. It could be that there is ridership. It could be, this could make people's lives better and save people driving and help the environment. So, and I'm frustrated, this MV Transportation company is not being held accountable. It seems if we're throwing money at this and they're screwing this up, they should be held accountable in some way. Is there any way that we can do that?
Well, they are assessed certain penalties, but it's mostly through Caltrain that operates or that kind of administers the contract that...
So we need to bring this to Caltrain and talk to them about how ludicrous this is.
We do work with them on a regular basis to discuss these issues.
And what do they say?
Unfortunately, it's a region-wide problem that is not just easily fixed by finding more drivers per se, it's just that, do we throw more money at the problem in a sense to get the drivers? But then if we're contractually obligated to not pay as much, then that drives up the costs too, if you wanted to possibly throw more money at the problem in a sense.
Because there are services where, you know, you can call, it's a kind of an Uber that might be more cost-effective in the long run.
Yeah. Some of the things we have identified for long-term goals is possibly looking at revamping our shuttle system through different means, because in the last five years, there have been new technologies developed with the Ubers and Lifts of the Worlds, and there's on-demand shuttles that...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't want anyone to get confused. I'm not suggesting we suddenly use the Uber. I'm just saying that there are on-demand solutions that might be better.
Yeah, they might be more supplemental to the traditional shuttles, and these are things we need to and should look at in the future.
Okay. And now, is there any way to address this now, or is this a done thing at this point? Address better solutions, address how to make this more functional?
It would be more of a long-term thing.
Okay. I'll take it up with some of the Caltrans people then. Thank you.
Ms. Jerome Robinson.
Well, I guess I was going to say, I think that the staff is well aware that there are operational issues, and I appreciate the council's weighing in on that tonight. I don't think those operational issues are solvable tonight in this forum. Thank you for your comments. We will take that under consideration. I think the council needs to decide whether they want to accept the grant or not.
I would love to accept the grant. I do have a question. In accepting the grant, the changes will be made along the way. It's, we're not going to come back with another report, accepting another grant and having the same response. That's one. The other, since we have, we represent, we're represented on CCAG, is there an opportunity to get electric shuttles? So that's a little bit more air quality friendly, but just looking at being a little bit more progressive. My third comment is actually not a question. As far as the TMA, if you look at Tarleton Properties, anyone who provides private shuttle services, do they have the same problems that we do? Probably not. And so what are they doing, what are they doing that we're not doing? So instead of reinventing the wheel. So just a thought, since you reached out to them as a part of the TMA or the TDM, one of the Ts. So those are my comments, and I will approve this, but just moving along, I know that there's room to improve and that you're already on that track. So all the comments I had around branding, you already answered. So thank you.
I just want to add, please let us know if, I know that staff sits on some of, on the Caltrain and on CCAG, but if there's anything we can do to reinforce what the message that you're giving them, please let us know.
Yes, absolutely. So I think in response to Councilmember Carlton's question, questions about accountability, there are terms in the contract. So as Nick described, the contract is between Caltrain and MV Transportation. I think the root cause of the driver retention issue is ultimately, it's a wage disparity issue. And so the terms of the contract with MV did not pay enough for them to maintain their driver levels, especially when you look at the competition from private shuttle operators and their ability to change wages much more rapidly than a public sector organization can do. So that's the fundamental issue that's underlying the driver shortage. As Nick described, there's a whole host of other issues about housing and access to jobs and other low-wage jobs issues at play here, but fundamentally, the contract terms did not pay enough to retain the drivers. So there are ways that Caltrain can hold MV accountable through assessing penalties, but they're minor in the grand scheme of the cost of the contract. They will be rebidding their contract at some point in the future, and that, from what we've heard from Caltrain staff, is the point at which they could also consider electric shuttles. So that's one other thing to keep in mind. And at the time they do that, the advocacy from the council on the CCAG board and through those other regional partners will definitely help get that word over to our funding partners as well.
Okay. Can we make a motion? Or do we?
We still have F7 was pulled.
I believe I'm the one that pulled F7. I have a question for Mr. Pogarro. My question is, I like the chart that you put together as far as budget principles and then recommended changes. Maybe I missed it, but is there a place around staff retention and promotion within our system? I didn't see anything there. And that's just thinking about the staff person that's been here. It is here?
So we do have a, we do have a budget principle that, it's on page F7.2. I'm sorry, yes, F7.2, and...
Is it on the chart?
Yeah, on the chart, it's 3B. 3B, 1F. It's right in the middle.
1F.
I noticed it was 2.
I think in the new principles, it's 1F, no, 1...
F.
Yeah.
It's 1F.
Right. Incorporate programs and initiatives that strengthen Menlo Park's standing as an employer of choice to retain highly qualified personnel.
And that would include promotions as well, so not just retention?
So promotions are governed by our labor agreements, and there's a process for that, but clearly, becoming an employer of choice, part of that, as I mentioned in my January 14th report to the council on resource capacity, one of the items that was identified there was feedback that we've received from employees that they're seeking career opportunities and career paths, and to the extent that we can promote that, that would be an element that would contribute to us being an employer of choice.
Okay. Thank you. My second comment on this item is, going back to the chart, is just looking at, when we talk about, it says strive to balance the resources and requirements of each area of the city in an equitable manner, and then it's, and then the action, the recommendation is, there isn't one. And so whenever I see the word equitable, I feel like it needs to be defined, and so that there needs to be some action behind it. Now, do I have a recommendation for that action? No, not at the moment, because we don't really have equity tools. And so if there's any suggestions from the DIA, so I would be interested in hearing it, if, Mr. Pogarro, if you have something as well.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Mayor, the recommendation is to keep that principle as is, so there was no change. That's why the language in the table reflects that. And definition of equity and equitable practices is very appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash. So I went through, I had three changes that I gave to City Manager Jerome Robinson yesterday. Do you know whether they made it into the change, or should I outline them?
They are not reflected in the staff report.
Right, those are your proposals, but yes, please do change or recommend them.
So, all right. So on page F7.1, under 1B, I actually preferred the original wording, which, so it would just be invest in new technologies that drive efficiency and productivity. Seemed very straightforward to me. And then for 1, that was for 1B. So it currently says invest in technologies that minimize low-value ad processes and most efficiently utilize our talented staff. And I actually preferred what was originally there, which was invest in new technologies that drive efficiency and productivity. Under 1F, it currently says incorporate programs and initiatives that strengthen Menlo Park's standing as an employer of choice to retain highly qualified personnel. My suggestion is just to shorten that to strengthen Menlo Park's standing as an employer And then finally, on 2A, it was to give it a little more direction, and it currently says prioritize city council-adopted initiatives and strategies that contribute to the quality of life in Menlo Park. My suggested language was implement city ordinances and council-adopted initiatives and strategies in order to contribute to the quality of life in Menlo Park. And that's it.
I have a follow-up question. If we supported the changes, do we need to make direction for that, or is it automatic?
You need to incorporate that into your motion when you approve it. I just would highlight one thing, and it's not to say not to adopt the language, but the one modification you made to 1F drops the retention of employees, I think completely out of the principles. And so if you want employee retention in there someplace, you either might want to leave it in there, or you might want to add it someplace else.
I was actually thinking that if we were an employer of choice, that we would automatically be retaining personnel. I'm fine with whatever.
Does anyone have any follow-up on that?
I don't think it hurts leaving it in, and it sends a message maybe to the staff that we do care about them and would like them to stay. Just throwing that out there. It does send a message.
Mr. Pagaro, my very last question. If, how easy will it be to amend this if at some point, in whether it's two weeks or two months, that we have equity tools that we can add to this priority?
The inclusion of equity tools, so just to be clear for those who are either watching or listening, the item before the council this evening is to adopt the budget principles that staff uses to develop the city manager's recommended budget for next fiscal year, which begins July 1 of 2020. Anything that would change our operations, which could very well be including information or looking at budgetary information in a different way, that could have an impact on the budget preparation schedule. Typically, what we do is we use our historic budget document and process, and we update the information with the latest and greatest that we have. And so if there's a request to modify or to add to that, the opportunity for that, or the window for that change really is rapidly approaching, if not entirely past us.
Thank you for your response. I will support it with an amendment that if we have equity tools, that we will use them. That's the way I will support it. So I'm not sure how to do this motion of F.
I just have one more thing.
Yes.
Just to throw up for conversation, because really, we're just, it's a philosophy, you know, they're principles. A few years ago, the city of, I believe it was Philadelphia, took their admin services and automated them and put them online. Now, Philadelphia spent, I think it was an extra $7,000 or $10,000 to actually benchmark where they were before and after doing the implementation. And they found that they took 250 hours of staff time for what they implemented, and knocked that down to, I think it was 27, which freed up five weeks of staff time. And that five weeks is like a whole nother project. And one of the things that we know in the city is, a lot of what keeps us from doing all the things we want to do is just lack of resources. And so it was beautiful. I applaud them for taking the effort to benchmark doing that, because quite often, it's like watching a child grow. We're in the thick of it, and we don't see the benefits of doing all the things that we do. And being able to say, okay, we made the right decision, we made the right investment of time and money to put in this new system, because it's freed up people five weeks to be able to do something, that's huge. Because then you go back and you say, well, darn, if we can do this in admin, let's do it in finance. You know, heaven knows how much we're going to free up there. Let's do it in HR. We could free up HR so that maybe we don't need that extra FTE that we're thinking about, that we can actually put these things forward. And so while I completely agree with what you're saying, I think that what this does in saying most efficiently utilize our talented staff is a lot of what this is doing. There's some smart city implementation that's done for transparency and flow of information, but a whole lot of it as well is done to free up staff and for effective, efficient management of services. It's kind of nice to call that out, so that we remind ourselves maybe to benchmark and to pay attention to what we're doing. We don't tend to celebrate our successes as much as maybe we should, because we have staff do some really great things. And we say, oh yeah, that was good, we check it off, and we move on. And so I would even say maybe invest in technologies that minimize low-value added processes, increase transparency in communications, and more effectively, just to really draw out so that we don't forget why we're doing this. Because the more vague we get, the more we think, oh, that's not very important, and it tends to drop off the list. And these are critically important things. Bringing in these technologies will not only make our staff run more effectively, efficiently, it'll increase transparency in communication, that will help our residents both understand more what we're doing and trust us more. They're important things. So I would just throw that out there, that rather than cut it short, I would leave it, if not add.
I'm fine with anything. I had suggestions, I actually had not planned to discuss...
I love an implementation idea on the other end.
Okay. I'm ready to move on. Any which?
Let's make a motion. For the consent calendar...
Mayor Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could we possibly take item F7 by itself, and I will ask the city attorney to state the motion?
Yes. So we will start with F7?
I'm not sure that I know what the motion is. Does the motion incorporate Councilmember Nash's proposed changes or not?
Well, do we have support of at least two other council members?
What I was gathering is that 2A stands, and the other two will just leave as is.
2A.
So, right, that one, I'm sorry, that that one will, the changes will stand. And that was with implement city ordinances and council adopted initiatives and strategies in order to contribute to the quality of life in Menlo Park.
But otherwise, as referenced in the staff report.
And didn't you have...
I'm not following. Did, do you have the printout of what? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My amendment, friendly amendment, to 2A is, once we have some equity tools, to use them. I don't know how simpler to put that. No, 2A. It's 2C. This is casino. Okay. Why is it on the same line? 2C. Where it says none.
Yeah, I think you're adding that to 2C.
You want to look at the actual principles, not at the chart. Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would be added to 2C?
Yes.
So that would be the motion?
Thank you.
If you don't mind, now that it said it, if you could add to B1, to also increase communications and transparency. Or increase transparency, however you want to say that. Because that is also one of the goals, for example, with our finance software that we just brought in, was to increase transparency and communications on that.
So through the mayor, I'm sorry, which principle are you amending?
So for Councilmember Carlton, or...
Carlton, I understood.
It's 1B.
1B.
And it's adding increased transparency? So I would like to make a motion on item F7. Adopt the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget principles to have, in addition to item 1B, increase transparency. The second item, is it F? Which one is yours?
For 2A, implement city ordinances and council adopted initiatives and strategies in order to contribute to the quality of life in Menlo Park.
And the third...
That's not 2A.
Yeah, that was 2A.
Oh, all right. Sorry.
Yes. And the third amendment, or addition, excuse me, would be on to provide city services and infrastructure that contributes quality of life in Menlo Park, Part C, to include, once we have equity tools, to use them. Or we must have equitable tools. It's two different statements. It's okay. It is 2C. The language, must, which one? Help me out here. I would like for the city to have equity tools that we use. So if we're going to spread resources equitably, we have to have tools in order to do that. So it doesn't make sense to have the equity with no tools. To me.
Through, to the mayor?
Yes.
I just want to be clear that I'm, I don't know that those equity tools can be identified and implemented in this year's budget, but that doesn't mean that we won't strive to incorporate it for next fiscal year's budget. The following.
If we're going to use the word equity, then we have to have an action behind it, and without tools, there's no action. So, and I know you understand that. So I'm going to push.
I understand. I'm just saying that we don't have tools identified as of yet, and typically, the budget process is a six-month process, and we're already in month two. So again, we're coming in on the close of month two. And so if the council's preference is that we include equity tools in the 2020, 21 budget, I need to go back and look at what that entails, because I can't, I don't know what it is right now.
That part I understand, and I appreciate you saying that. What I would like to do is put language in there so that you identify them, we use them, and we can move forward.
So can I, if I understand correctly, then you want us to work in identifying equity tools, and when those are developed, that we bring those back to the council for consideration and incorporation into the principles?
That sounds a lot more complicated, but I believe yes.
And so just to underscore what Mr. Pagaro is saying, we will work on that. It may not be in time to be explicit in this year's budget. But we understand the goal.
Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Heron, do I need to? Thank you. Motion.
The motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent.
So Ms. Heron, the next motion is, are the rest of the consent items?
Correct.
And is that F1 through F6?
So it's F1, F3, F4, F5, and F6. The motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. The next items are public hearings that are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The next item is G1, an ordinance 1066, amending chapter 16.79 and section 16.04.295, definition of dwelling unit secondary of the City of Menlo Park's municipal code to comply with state legislation pertaining to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and direction regarding additional updates. To introduce the Assistant City Manager, to introduce this item is the Assistant City Attorney, Cara Silver, and Interim Community Development Director, Ms. Deanna Chow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So we are here to present to you on an urgency ordinance implementing state laws relating to ADUs and JADUs. What we want to discuss is to summarize the six new state bills that were passed this legislative season. We also wanted to provide a framework for staff's thinking on how to approach this urgency ordinance and how to implement the state requirements. Then we wanted to review the differences between the Menlo Park old regulations and the new proposed regulations, discuss next steps, and then we will make a recommendation to adopt an urgency ordinance. To start out, we thought we would just review a couple of definitions that we will be using. The first is the new term that the state has developed to refer to what used to be called secondary dwelling units. The state statutory schemes now refer to these units as accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Our existing Menlo Park code refers to them as secondary dwelling units. We will be making an update to that reference. They can be detached, they can be attached to the main house, or they can be interior to the main house, which means a conversion of some of the existing square footage of the main house. The second term that we'll be using tonight is junior accessory dwelling unit. This is a category of a accessory dwelling unit. It used to be thought of as a bedroom conversion, where you took a bedroom of an existing main house and then added a small kitchen facility, and then included a shared bathroom. The new state legislation now allows junior accessory dwelling units to incorporate any portion of the main house and convert that to a JADU. It must be located within a main house, and it must have an independent kitchen, but as I mentioned, it can have a shared bathroom. It's typically, it has to be under 500 square feet. It's typically between 150 and 300 square feet. The other definition we'll be using is a multifamily district, and in Menlo Park, that is an R2 district or greater. So in terms of the six major bills that were adopted, ADU bills concentrate on housing production. There are some preservation aspects of the ADU legislation, but these bills are primarily designed to promote new housing opportunities. The major changes that came down in this legislative season included this new category of JADUs. It used to be that this was an optional set of... It used to be that this was an optional set of policies, but now cities must have legislation dealing with JADUs, and they must be permitted within the zoning code. In terms of ADU production in single-family zones, the new state legislation now requires two ADUs to be allowed for in single-family zones. One of those must be, or can be, a detached ADU, and the other must be either an attached or interior ADU, or a JADU. You can see why we flashed to the definitions in the first slide. Then, the other requirement that came out of state law was a new concept of putting ADUs into multifamily buildings. And this new requirement mandates both two separate detached units in multifamily buildings. So it would, these detached units could be constructed somewhere in the open space areas, or in a surface parking lot, or other portion of the property that's not dedicated to actual housing square footage. And then a second category of ADUs must be permitted to incorporate a conversion of existing, currently uninhabited space in the existing units, and those are thought of as internal ADUs. And we have talked about this in the past. Typically, what is included or thought of in this regard would be conversion of things like laundry rooms, boiler rooms, garages, storage closets, utility closets, that type of thing. The caveat here is that only 25% of the units in a multifamily building could be eligible for this type of interior conversion. Some other requirements is a big barrier that we've discussed in the past to production of ADUs is minimum lot size, and Menlo Park did have a minimum lot size requirement in its existing regulations. Minimum lot sizes are no longer allowed under state law. State law also significantly relaxed setback requirements. That's been happening in previous updates to ADU regulation, but this legislative session, we saw even further relaxation. And also, there was a description of a sort of by right ADU unit that must be permitted on all single-family district, or pieces of property that would allow for 800-square-foot ADU with a 16-foot height and four-foot setbacks. And all development regulations must be waived in order to permit that particular protected sort of ADU. And then there were a couple of modest changes to parking standards this season, but there were significant changes in previous years, and so the changes that are reflected this year aren't very significant. There were some procedural amendments. The most significant one was that current state law required that ADU permits must be processed within 120 days, and that they must be ministerial process. This new legislation now requires permits to be processed in 60 days. That's a very quick timeframe for cities to turn around these types of permits. Also, there was an impact fee waiver, so all ADUs less than 750 square feet are not subject to any impact fees. Any ADUs over 750 square feet, however, the city may charge impact fees proportional to the main house. There was also a separate enforcement provision, and the state legislation now gives the Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, along with the California Attorney General, the power to enforce local compliance with the state law. So if a city does not adopt a state-compliant ordinance, HCD and the Attorney General have enforcement power. Cities must be, however, given 30 days to adopt an ordinance if an enforcement action is taken. And then finally, the new legislation does provide expressly that ADUs count towards our Regional Housing Need Allocation, or RENA, which is a good thing to clarify. And there is still some confusion about how to assess an ADU in terms of affordability levels. We are fortunate in San Mateo County, where 21 Elements has developed a methodology for putting those ADUs into various affordability levels, and we expect in Menlo Park to continue that process. Some other sort of collateral issues that are legislation regarding ADUs. One was that cities cannot enforce owner occupancy requirements on new ADUs. Menlo Park does have an existing owner occupancy requirement in our local ordinance, which we can no longer enforce as to new ADUs. We can still enforce it as to ADUs that were approved prior to January 1, 2020. This particular provision sunsets on January 1, 2025. Also, JADUs under state law must be owner occupied, so we have incorporated that into our proposed urgency ordinance. And then short-term rentals were, also, came up as an issue, and both ADUs and JADUs that are created after January 1, 2020, may not be subject to short-term rentals. And the reason for that is the state really wants to encourage, again, the production of new long-term affordable rental opportunities. ADUs that were built before January 1, 2020, however, can be subject to short-term rentals. So you can see the conundrum that staff is in at this point. We really have several different categories of ADUs now and enforcement that we will need to be taking. Finally, there was an amnesty program, and that involves a five-year stay on enforcement by the building official of any existing ADU with building code violations, or that was constructed without permits. Upon an application by an owner of such an unpermitted ADU, the building official must stop any enforcement action to rectify building code violations, provided that the ADU is, you know, habitable and meets health and safety standards. So in terms of the framework that staff took in bringing forward this urgency ordinance, we wanted to bring it as an urgency ordinance, although we, in order to comply with the state law that actually went into effect January 1, 2020, many cities are in the same boat as we are in trying to adopt an ordinance that takes place, you know, by January 1, 2020 is obviously very difficult to do, especially with zoning ordinances, which need to go through the Planning Commission before the city council. And so many cities are taking urgency ordinances to their councils in order to comply with this timeframe. Also, the city has 10 pending applications. Actually, I think we just verified today that we have a couple others as well, so we, I think it's 12 pending applications for ADUs, and they've been in sort of a limbo period, and so we do need to respond to those applications, and so we wanted to bring this as an urgency ordinance, so that if those applications want to take advantage of the new ordinance, they could do so. In terms of drafting the ordinance, what we did was try to adopt the express state law requirements, as was mentioned in the staff report and has been widely talked about. The legislation is very confusing, it's internally inconsistent, it has huge gaps. We will be receiving some cleanup legislation that's already being drafted, so it's very difficult to implement. But we did our best, and we tried to carry forward what we thought the spirit of the state law was, in addition to our best interpretation of the actual language. What we also did was carried forward some of the less restrictive local requirements that are currently in our code. Again, since this is a encouragement of more housing production, we thought that the council would want to also move those existing code provisions forward. In terms of why we decided not to implement other changes or to seek a ADU reach code, our reasoning there is that the existing state law changes are very significant, and even just going from all units, all single-family units having one ADU on site to two ADUs on site, that's a big change. And so we thought that we should take some time, see how these changes are impacting residential neighborhoods, and see also whether this ordinance is, in fact, encouraging the additional production that we would hope it would before seeking even additional changes. Also, we, because we're bringing this forward as an urgency ordinance, this, the other provisions have not been vetted at the Housing Commission, or at the Planning Commission, or even with the community, and so we thought it was, would be a stretch to propose even more aggressive provisions at this juncture. Also, I just wanted to mention that we acknowledge that more refinement is going to be needed on this ordinance. We will be expecting to come back to you with some additional cleanup changes, such as changing the definitions of secondary dwelling units to accessory dwelling units throughout the code. We've just done it in the operative code provision, but we need to go through each one of the zoning chapters and make those updates. And as I mentioned, we also expect that there will be some updates coming from the state, and HCD is also, hopefully, will be issuing some additional guidance, and so we expect to make some more amendments as those new laws and guidances come down. And with that, I wanted to turn it over to Deanna to walk through the actual urgency ordinance that we're proposing.
Thank you. So the next few slides, we'll be providing more detail and an overview of some of the key regulations in sort of three different buckets. One, detached ADUs. The second will be the junior ADUs, and the third category of the ADUs in the multifamily zoning districts. So here is a comparison chart, looking at our existing regulations in comparison to our proposed urgency ordinance for an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. Each of these identify different criteria that we evaluate, development standards that we evaluate our accessory dwelling units. So for minimum lot sizes, Cara already mentioned, that has been eliminated. In terms of number of units, currently, it's one ADU that's allowed. The new ordinance would allow for two, in addition to the primary dwelling unit. One of the ADUs must be an interior ADU or a junior ADU, in addition to a detached ADU. The maximum unit size currently is 640 square feet, with some allowances for a larger unit if it's made to accessible requirements. In this example, the maximum size is 800 square feet for a one-bedroom unit, but it does allow our code for a 1,000-square-foot unit with an increase in bedroom size. I'd also like to note that through a use permit process, you could ask for a greater-than-1,000-square-foot unit ADU. In terms of subdivision, it's not permitted unless the certain minimum lot with depth and area are met. In the new ordinance, it's allowed in limited cases, and this is often referred to as the Habitat for Humanity clause, where if a nonprofit is buying the unit, then a subdivision would be supported. Setbacks, there is a reduction in the setbacks, so the front remains the same as the primary dwelling unit, but for the side and rear dwelling units, it's four feet. As you see, the existing is, the detached unit is similar to what is required for the primary, with the exception of the rears 10 feet, but there is an allowance for a five-foot setback if there was neighbor approval. The proposed ordinance would just be automatically at four feet. And just as a side note, for units greater than 800 square feet, there are increased So with respect to the number of bedroom units, the current code, the maximum number of bedrooms is one bedroom and one bathroom. With an 800-square-foot detached unit, the maximum is one bedroom with no maximum on the number of bathrooms. Likewise, with an, as I mentioned earlier, with an increase of square footage above 850 square feet to 1,000 square feet, the maximum number of bedrooms is two, with no maximum on the number of bathrooms. For the floor area, and this is for the total lot, the ADU would be included in today's maximum. So for example, if your maximum allowed square footage for the lot is 2,800 square feet, your ADU would be within that 2,800 square feet under the proposed urgency ordinance. That ADU size of 800 square feet would not be included in your, in the maximum allowed floor area for the lot. And that is also the same for building coverage. I'd like to note that for ADUs greater than 800 square feet, though, that the building coverage and the floor area would contribute to your maximum floor area for the lot and your maximum building coverage for the lot. The daylight plan requirement has been eliminated for detached ADUs under 800 square feet, but is applicable to ADUs over 800 square feet, and the number of parking spaces remain the same at one, with some exceptions for proximity to ride share and public transit. Last slide for single-family detached. The aesthetics requirement has been eliminated for objective criteria. The owner occupancy requirement, as Cara mentioned, there is no longer an occupancy, an owner occupancy requirement for units built after January 1, 2020. We are proposing to keep the owner occupancy requirement for those units built prior to. That would be consistent with our existing code, and we will continue with the non-tenancy provision, the registration process, which allows for tenants to occupy, or to seek the ability to relocate for a year or so if need be, if a job relocation has them elsewhere, they can seek non-tenancy status. For short-term rentals, as Cara mentioned, moving forward, ADUs built after January 1, 2020 must have a 30-day lease required. For existing ADUs, that is not, there is no short-term rental requirement. For existing ADUs, that is not, there is no short-term rental requirement. Or short-term, I should say, short-term rentals would be allowed. Conversions of accessory buildings into ADUs remains. You can do that under our current ordinance as well as under the proposed. And new to the regulations is the amnesty program that Cara mentioned. That is applicable for the next five years, so unpermitted ADUs can remain so long as they do meet health and safety code. So next, we just wanted to show a couple of different samples of detached ADUs. These were prepared by Heart of San Mateo County as an opportunity to provide templates and to ease production of housing. This shows a one-bedroom, 720-square-foot, one-bedroom unit and you can see the exterior elevation here is just in a contemporary style. The next slide is a smaller one-bedroom unit, shaped differently, still one bedroom, one bath, but you can see that even with the same footprint, you can have different exterior. So you can look at a contemporary home, also a craftsman-style home with the same floor plan. So along with Heart, we believe other agencies are also producing tools and handbooks and gets so that folks have an opportunity to understand what the regulations are for accessory dwelling units and then also have the ability to maybe have off-the-shelf plans to bring to the jurisdictions to have them approved. So the next slide here is a new concept that Cara has mentioned, so the junior ADUs. So in addition to the detached ADU, single-family homes can also have one junior ADU or an interior ADU. And so here's a comparison between the two. A maximum size for interior ADUs is 800 square feet or 50% of the existing square footage of the home, whichever is greater. The limitation on a JADU is 500 square feet. The requirements for kitchens, bathrooms are required. One thing to note, though, that for a JADU, you can have a shared bathroom versus an independent facility required for an interior ADU. Separate entrances are required for both. Parking is not required for a JADU. And owner occupancy, however, is required for a JADU where it's not for a detached or an attached ADU. But the process for reviewing JADUs and interior ADUs remains the same at 60 days and is a ministerial process. So just moving to multifamily, which is currently not allowed in any of our multifamily or mixed-use districts, the number of ADUs that would be permitted are, there's two categories attached, which could be up to 25% of the existing number of units with a minimum of one. And in addition to that, you could have two detached ADUs. There is no maximum size to the ADUs and the square footage associated with the ADUs does not count towards your maximum floor area ratio. In terms of setbacks, the side and rear are four feet and this is for detached only if they're interior, they're already accommodated within the existing footprint of the unit. The height, if it's detached, it's 16 feet. Again, if it was interior, it would already be accommodated in the existing structure. Parking, there are no requirements for interior conversions of ADUs. And then for owner occupancy, anything new that's built after January 1, 2020 would not have an owner occupancy requirement, but there would be limitations on short-term rentals. So that provision would apply for new units that leases would need to be for 30 days or more. In terms of the next steps, our urgency ordinance does need to be reviewed and approved by HCD, so we would send our ordinance up for their review and approval. As Cara mentioned, we are currently in the process of reviewing 12 ADU applications and we would continue to process under the new regulations. We would be returning to the council for cleanup amendments, so our terminology from secondary dwelling unit to accessory dwelling unit and also to add to our multifamily and mixed-use districts, the ability to have accessory dwellings as a permitted use. They are not currently, they're because they're not currently allowed. And then sort of the next big step would be additional outreach and development of tools and consideration of modifications to the ADU regulations and this could be part of our SB 2 grant. So last November, the city council authorized staff to apply for an SB 2 grant and we just heard news that we are preliminary been approved for the $160,000 grant and part of that was to help fund work towards our ADUs, which is exciting news. And so we can look at outreach, we can look at additional modifications, solicit Housing Commission and Planning Commission input and then also conduct community engagement. We're looking to do this concurrently, potentially with the housing element process. One of the new laws, I think, looks at encouraging housing elements to look at furthering ADU production and so this would tie in nicely with the timing. But it's part of council's consideration is our goal-setting session on how to move forward with the next round of ADU revisions if that is desired. And then lastly, we wanted to highlight a few revisions since the publication of the ordinance. So we noticed in addition to 16.79.040, there's one other section, I believe, that we need to just correct the terminology within the document from secondary to accessory for dwelling unit. And then we want to, even though it's clear in state law, it's not indicated in our ordinance, we wanted to be consistent with state law that there is a sunset provision to the delayed enforcement for unpermitted ADUs and that would end on January 1, 2025. So we would add that to Section 16.79.110. So again, our staff's recommendation is to adopt the urgency ordinance, which is included as attachment A. In order to pass, it would be a four-fifths vote by the city council and there would be no second reading with the ordinance becoming effective immediately if passed. So that concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Nash?
I'm not sure if this is a clarifying question or later, but we got the letter from the Californians for Home Ownership this afternoon and I'm wondering if we can get a legal comment on it. Please.
Yes, and I will respond and Bill may want to chime in as well. So Californians for Home Ownership has been sending these letters to most cities that are bringing ADU ordinances to their councils. And so they have a perspective that local regulations really should not be applied to ADU production. We, I think, just have a healthy disagreement with that interpretation of state law. State law certainly does preempt a large part of the city's ability to regulate, but we think that the city can still assert some of its zoning regulations in this area, provided that it allows the 800-square-foot ADU that I mentioned with the four-foot setbacks and the 16 feet and some of the other requirements. And we have included those requirements in the ordinance that we are proposing this evening.
At this time, we will take a public comment. First public speaker is Michael Duran.
Hi, I'm Mike Duran. I live in District 4. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking here tonight on my own behalf and not as a representative of the Planning Commission. I agree with the staff's assessment that the state law changes are confusing and maybe contradictory and difficult to implement, so I commend them on their effort in doing this. I do think that the proposed ordinance falls short in a number of areas, both in the guidance, you know, conforming with the spirit of the state law, which is clearly to encourage ADUs, and also, I think, with the subcommittee report of this council encouraging a reach ordinance for ADUs. So I've distributed a markup of the proposed ordinance with some changes that I would suggest to the detached ADU requirements. It's two pages. The changes are all on the second page. I include the first page just for context. The changes are shown in red on the second page. So state law requires that ADUs be permitted up to 1,000 square feet if they provide more than one bedroom. The proposed ordinance only allows more than one bedroom if the ADU is over 850 square feet. I don't think the intention of the state ordinance was to restrict access to more than one bedroom. It was to encourage construction of units of more than one bedroom and to award them with extra floor area ratio if they provided that. So I would propose that all the ADUs be permitted two bedrooms rather than a limit on one bedroom for ADUs of less than 850 square feet. Secondly, the existing ordinance, we have them in Menlo Park, provides for a five-foot setback from side and rear property lines with the consent of the adjacent property owner. We've lost that concept. I would propose for ADUs over 800 square feet that they be allowed with a four-foot setback if we have the consent of the adjacent property owner. Again, I think that's encouraging the construction of ADUs. Finally, we have this concept of an additional 800 square feet on the floor area ratio and the building coverage for ADUs of 800 square feet or less, but for more than 800 square feet, there's no extension, there's no increase in the allowable floor area ratio. I don't think that dichotomy makes sense. You can have two houses next to each other. One of them is built out at 2,800 square feet. They're allowed to build an 800-square-foot ADU. His neighbor only has 1,500 square feet now, would like to build a 1,000-square-foot ADU. He's not able to do that. So I propose an increase of 800 square feet to the allowable floor area ratio and the building coverage for all ADUs, whether they're less than 800 square feet or over 800 square feet. I'm out of time, got lots more to say, but thank you.
Thank you. The next public speaker is Elias Blowie.
Good evening, Elias Blowie, Menlo Park resident. I'm disappointed with the timeliness here. You heard that from me a few weeks ago, so I won't belabor that further, but other cities are further along in this in cases. The largest HOA in the state started on this back in the fall. Now we have an urgency ordinance in front of us. I believe we are making important identifiable mistakes. That's a real red flag to, shouldn't be rushing this through. Conceptually, know that I support bona fide reasonable secondary or granny-type units, but this is a setup for unintended consequences that are really counter to the goals of affordability, availability, and a broader base of owners and renters in homes. In particular, carefully test the ordinance against your classic spec or McMansion. It's a potential bonanza when you think about the unintended consequences. Work through the draft ordinance. It demonstrably fails. A luxury pool house, conveniently with some cooking and a bath, becomes a secondary unit. There's nothing in the ordinance that prevents that. Essentially, you just put on a plan, secondary unit. It's a pool house, luxury pool house by anybody who's looking at it, but it passes. Ditto on a media room with a bath and some convenient cooking nearby. That's an interior ADU under these. They're not defined out. But the pool house and the media room just sailed right through the current square footage limits and the setbacks. You're looking at a 16-foot, 800-square-foot pool house that has nothing to do with somebody else renting it. That's not right and only slight creativity leads to those abuses. It hurts neighbors, it hurts property values, it hurts our quality of life, and in those cases, it results in no production of usable housing units. So some suggestions quickly here with my time running out. No STRs for either secondary or primary units. STRing anything just hurts longer-term rental stability. Getting owners to certify on an upfront enforceable basis that these will not be used for primary occupancy. These are supposed to be bona fide units. That means separate adults, whether they're family members or renters, not hidden pool houses, rec rooms and that sort of thing. For tear downs, why is there any bump in square footage? That's just allowing 800 square feet more for this sort of stuff. Make sure you get the height rules right. And finally, prohibit interior connections, doors and so on, except in the junior units where they're required. That's just another way that you incorporate more square footage into a use that's not going to be a bona fide rental situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is David Howard.
Hi, I'm David Howard, 721 Menlo Avenue. I've got a couple of questions that maybe the professionals can answer. We're increasing the density of the building's occupancy.
Mr. Howard, can you direct your questions to council and then we can ask staff?
We're adding density to the occupancy of houses and lots that were originally single-family dwellings, turning them into dual dwellings. Is there fire sprinkler regulations that come into effect that would then require that these buildings be fire-rated? Is there fire plans that come in with these permits that are being approved? Also, low-cost housing, is there a requirement that these units be under the low-cost housing? Like some of the apartment houses that are being built around here, where a certain percentage is low cost. Also, are these units under rent control? We had an emergency rent control that came in at the end of last year to comply with the new California rent control. Are these buildings now under rent control too? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Are there any more public speakers? Are there any follow-up questions from the council? Would you like to ask Mr. Howard's questions?
So I think some really interesting questions have been raised by the speakers and would love to get some answers. I guess the simplest ones are from the last speaker. Are there any fire sprinkler plans that are required?
So if the main house requires fire sprinklers, then the ADU must also provide fire sprinklers? And then in terms of his other question...
Actually, just real quickly, if it's an easy answer, when would the house, main house, require fire sprinklers?
I don't know.
Okay, I will go with what you said then. Fine. Okay.
My recollection is it has to do with the fire department and what the water rating is at the nearest hydrants. I'm looking at Justin. This has come up in the past where on occasion, the fire district has required fire sprinklers for single-family homes if there wasn't adequate fire pressure at the nearest fire hydrant, but otherwise they're not required for single-family homes. Right? I mean, I think that's in the latest.
Sorry, I may need to refresh her as well because my memory may be a little foggy on this, but I thought fire sprinklers are now required for new, new single-family homes?
In the newest code.
And then there's with remodels, there's certain triggers for when fire sprinklers are required. So for the secondary dwelling unit, I would probably be best if we report back after talking with the fire district, but I would believe that a new standalone secondary dwelling unit may indeed trigger fire sprinkler requirements.
Again, it's going to be determined by the fire district.
And how does that play into our passing an urgency ordinance tonight?
It doesn't affect it. They have to... It doesn't affect it. They have to meet building code requirements.
Got it. Thank you. And then, requirements for low-cost housing?
Right. There is no requirement for the BMR housing. It's triggered at five units, and so, the most we would expect to see is three units in single-family neighborhoods. It could be triggered in the multifamily, in a multifamily building if there are more than five units. And then in terms of his question about rent control, I seem to remember that the state rent control provision exempted ADUs, but I'll have to go back and look at that. I don't recall for sure.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The fire chief must be watching our exciting meeting tonight. So, he weighs in that residential sprinklers are required for all residential structures.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chief Harold. Actually, do you have the rest of the questions that were asked by the other two speakers, or do you?
I think so. Oh, do you? Yeah, go ahead.
I have one.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll follow up with one that I thought was an interesting question by Mr. Duran. I thought that we had a provision for four-foot from the lot line if the person that lived on the other side, if the neighbors agreed. And I assume that if we already have that, that would stay the case. What is the setback as we're moving forward?
So, I believe that Mr. Duran's concern or desire has been addressed with the new urgency ordinance. It is a minimum, I mean, it is a four-foot setback for the side in the rear, so that's already being proposed.
Okay, great. That's what I thought. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
I think his point was for the larger unit, it's not allowed at four, and he's proposing that for the larger unit, it be allowed at four with the consent of the neighbor.
Oh, for over 800 square foot, yeah.
Right.
And I think that's a policy call for the council. It certainly could be. We did discuss that issue, and we were concerned about the administration of this ordinance to begin with is very complex, and then to start tracking additional setbacks. There are so many different setback rules already with respect to the ADU, so at this point, we were not proposing that, but that is a policy call for the council. I think the other question was about floor area limit over, for ADUs over 800 square feet. Right now, we do provide a credit for, of 800 square feet for an ADU under 800 square feet. We are not giving a floor area credit for any ADUs over 800 square feet. Again, that's a policy call. The state law does not, the state law only requires us to give a FAL credit for 800 square feet or more. The state law, I think, wants to encourage production of smaller units, thinking that they would be more affordable, but again, that's up to the council. And then, the final point that was raised, again, staff had a lot of discussion about this point as well, the whether to specify how many bedrooms, and again, that's a policy call for the council. We did have a bit of a concern that adding additional bedrooms would increase occupancy, and again, enrolling this out, we weren't sure that that was something that the council wanted to do at this stage, but certainly you could, you know, eliminate the bedroom requirement. There are all kinds of different, you know, ways for you to handle that.
Actually, does it, if one bedroom is required, does that mean one cannot have a studio?
No, one bedroom's not required.
Okay, it's a maximum.
Yes, maximum.
And then, what about the idea of a pool house and media center, and how, I think that's a very plausible line of thinking, and how, any thoughts as to how we can prevent that?
So, I mean, the only way we could do that would be to essentially put a deed restriction on the property that requires that any building that qualifies as an accessory dwelling unit must be used as a separate dwelling unit by a separate family unit, if you will. Now, the question is, is whether HCD is going to permit that or not. I mean, they might because it encourages its use as an accessory dwelling unit rather than as part of the main house and just, you know, trumping our maximum FAL rules. So, we might incorporate a provision that requires that any accessory dwelling unit that exceeds the maximum floor area limit for the lot must record a deed restriction, that that accessory dwelling unit can only be used for a separate housing unit, family unit. I mean, the precise wording, I kind of think that if, when you give us the direction at the end of this, that maybe the best thing to do would be to bring it back for adoption next week. I'm looking at Cara if that's, because you have a meeting next week?
Yes. The concern I do have about that deed restriction is it is tricky to draft because you, how do you distinguish between somebody that is in the original household and not within the original household? You know, if you're, if, you know, an adult child is using the ADU, is that, you know, considered a pool house conversion or not? It is a very tricky deed restriction to enforce.
Can I speak to that? One of the beautiful things I've seen with ADUs, frankly, is, and this is my friend Helen. Helen grew up in a house. She wanted her mom near her. You know, we have all the obvious financial constraints of the area, and they built an ADU. Her mother lives in the ADU, so her mother's near them. She can babysit. Her mother likes to travel. She has other kids. They visit. It works out beautifully because she gets to live in the house that she loved, that she grew up in. They didn't have to sell it. Her mother's near, her mother doesn't need that much space. It works out perfectly. I also know people who, you know, dear to our hearts and soon to be mine, I'm sure, your child graduates from university but still can't afford to live in the area. You can build an ADU, and your child can live there until the child gets married. Then you switch, I guess. But, I'm just saying, there are very legitimate reasons and ways that people are building these to provide a better lives for either themselves or their children without having to bring in someone who's not from a member of their family to live in that house. And I would never want to restrict people from being able to do that with their homes.
Yeah, I mean, that's not the intent, so, but that person is still using it as a separate dwelling unit, and whether they're related by family or not, it's still being occupied as a separate dwelling unit. She can cook there. She can do, you know, she lives independently. She may, you know, interact, but it's still a secondary dwelling.
We assume she may cook in the main house because she's a better cook than her daughter. Who knows? I just don't want to get overly prescriptive. I get your point.
Again, it's your, you need to set the policy, and I think we can incorporate the language in if you want to do that. And I think the other point was, is to prohibit connection between an accessory, an attached or interior accessory dwelling unit and the balance of the main dwelling, if you will.
Now, to take this question a step further, though, I noticed in the report, it says that it could be counted for RENA numbers. In that case, how does that work? At what level RENA is it just counted as at market rate unless it is deed restricted to be BMR that someone volunteers that? How does it get counted in the RENA numbers that we have?
So, every year, we report out through our Housing Element Annual Reporting Program, and you'll be seeing that next month. It'll be brought to the Housing Commission next week, and so, we have been reporting our ADUs as part of our RENA numbers. There's a column for either deed restricted or just sort of naturally affordable, naturally affordable units, and so, they would fall under generally the naturally affordable. They're not deed restricted. And so, as Cara mentioned earlier, through 21 Element San Mateo County, we've sort of established what sort of percentage would fall within each category, and so, we've been applying that, and HCD has accepted it in the last several years.
So, does it count, does it count as BMR housing?
It counts towards our, I guess, affordability levels. Yes, they're not deed restricted, so they can, they're not, you know, 30 years, 55 years restricted, but they do count towards our affordability levels at the lower income categories.
Just throwing it out there. Have we ever thought about giving people, I don't know, taxes lowered if they volunteer to have something restricted for X many years as BMR? Could we do something like that to be able to, because we're always talking about we have more money. We actually want to inspire more BMR houses. Could we put together a program where the city incentivizes people to voluntarily deed restrict for 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, what have you? As I say, I haven't thought this through. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if we can legally do that.
So, it's something that could be explored at a different time, but it's not relevant to tonight's discussion of this?
Yeah, I had a question following upon this, this sort of deed restriction scenario that's not voluntary. So, does that encompass a sort of occupancy requirement? Because in theory, like, is there any way fundamentally that you can prevent the pool house scenario? Because you can just leave it empty, right? And there's nothing, and this is inherent in the state law, right? That's just an inherent weakness, right, that there is no sort of actual occupancy requirement?
Yes, that's correct, and I think that's one of the reasons why it strikes me as being very difficult to enforce. You know, you have to start, you know, surveying and seeing who's living there, and are they living there, you know, on a regular basis? Do they belong as part of the household? It can be very tricky.
Councilmember Carlton.
Back onto what we are going to discuss to Mr. McClure's point. It says on page G 1.3, the possibility of increasing height limits and allowing two-story ADUs, especially over garages. I was under the impression that we could already add a second-story ADU to homes, in particular, over garages, or is this talking about where someone tears out their garage and builds a two-story ADU? I just wanted to make sure I was clear because I thought that you could already, as part of the, whether it's a junior ADU or an included ADU, that you could build them above the garage in a second story.
Sure. So, I think there's sort of two different scenarios here. One, I think, as you're mentioning, so if it's an attached unit or above an attached garage, it would fall within the height regulations of the main dwelling unit, so generally, you can fit two stories within that overall height limit. If it's detached, it would be tougher, but, you know, potentially still accommodating two stories. It would be a 16-foot height limit for any unit that's 800 square feet or less, and then it's slightly increased to a 17-foot height limit for a unit above 18, oh, excuse me, 800 square feet. So, you would just have lower plate heights, but in a flat roof potentially, but it could be potentially accommodated in a detached structure.
What is the height limit on these structures if they're standalone structures?
So, if it's standalone detached, 16 feet for 800 square feet or less, and 17 feet for 800 or 801 square feet or more, you can ask for an increase in height with the use permit.
I came across a really quirky thing, and I don't know where this came from, in Menlo Park, and apparently, it's one of those weird Menlo Park things, like what color you paint your front door. Any ceiling above 12 feet counts for double FAR. When you've got a very small building, having high ceilings actually gives it a bigger feeling. Also, I remember one of the proposed designs out of one of the groups that had a two-story with like a loft bedroom as a way of fitting everything in. If someone had a loft bedroom, kind of by definition, you're going to have higher than 12-foot ceiling. So, do we need to waive the 12-foot ceiling double FAR silliness that we have?
So, that, so what you're referring to is in our definition of floor area limit, and so, the 12-foot ceiling height is for a two-story development, so where there's a height of a, from average natural grade, I believe, to 12 feet in height, you would double count that, and likewise, for attic space that is greater than five feet, it would be double counted as well. For a single-story detached secondary dwelling unit, you can have a 12-foot ceiling height. I don't believe, I believe you double count at like 16 feet. So, a detached unit wouldn't have that, a detached one-story wouldn't have that same concern, I think, with the 12-foot height limit.
But, it would if it was above a garage?
If it was a two-story, if it wasn't a detached, or excuse me, an attached, yes, but it's, that's a broader, I think, conversation on the definition of floor area limit that applies to all single-family homes.
So, I thought that was, the FAR for that also counts, it counts across the board as extra FAR. It's not just for the limit of how much you can build on your property. It counts towards everything that we use for FAR, correct?
So, there's sort of two, there's two calculations for square footage. One is FAL, floor area limit for single-family and R2 properties, and then FAR, floor area ratio, gross floor area for R3 and generally mixed-use projects. So, in multifamily R3 properties, that 12-foot height limit does not, is not, is not applied. It's in single-family residential zoning districts in the R2 where the 12-foot height limit, and when you start double counting, it does count towards your overall floor area limit for the site.
Which is where we're going to be building the ADUs, right?
And in multifamily, now it's permissive in multifamily zoning districts and R2 zoning districts.
Right. So, the 12-foot limit isn't going to prevent someone from putting a loft bedroom inside if they want. The ceiling limits that we have are not going to prevent people from building a loft bedroom. That's a question.
And I'm just trying to, like, so-
So, if I have a little 800-square-foot place, I have a small backyard. I live in the Willows. I can't, I don't have the space to build something larger, but I have a design, and some of them look cute that I've seen, where it's a living room, kitchen, bathroom downstairs, and then stairs going up for a little sleeping loft above so that they have a bed away from the living room area. Can they do that without, with the height allowing the loft without triggering our double FAR?
And this is a detached unit?
Yep. Either or, but yeah.
So, I think in a detached, you'd be fine because you could have up to 16 feet, and it's a single story, so it would not count. I think a loft, I think it's depending on how it's, if it has permanent access. We'd have to look to see if it's counting as two stories. I don't think a loft bedroom-
If it's a bedroom, I assume it would have permanent access, yes.
I've seen like pull down, I mean, pull down ladders, and we'd have to look at the construction, but, so if it is a two-story structure, then it would be subject to the 12-foot FAR, FAL, excuse me, double counting. There is the provision where the 800 square feet does not count towards your overall FAL for units that are 800 square feet or less, so that is a new provision, so you're not sort of capped at that maximum 2,800 square feet.
All right. For ADUs, just to wrap up, because I don't want to go on, for ADUs, I'd like to see that go away because I think it's fine- that go away, because I think it's fine if people want to have a permanent stair going up to a permanent loft where they can sleep, so that they don't have as big of a footprint in someone's backyard. That's fine. That's not going to impact anyone's life, and there's no reason for us to make that restriction, unless you tell me otherwise.
I would just recommend that that's one of the things when you're coming back and looking at a comprehensive changes, because I think, again, it could be an unintended consequence if it's just eliminated for all, you know, detached ADUs. It may open it up further than what you really intend, so...
I can't imagine, but, okay. But when is this going to come back? In two years, three years?
Two weeks.
So, you're suggesting come back as part of a, potentially a more comprehensive...
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at, there are going to be more comprehensive changes with...
We're not going to do it this year.
Right, so if we do this concurrently with the housing element, then it would be looking at, starting at the end of this year, next year, to, to start looking at broader modifications to the ADU regulations.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, I just wanted to chime in that, you know, I'm supportive of the direction in approving these, these changes. I was part of the subcommittee that, that recommended sort of the kind of reach ADU codes, but there is just a lot going on here. There are a lot of moving parts. And so, I think, to the point made, I would prefer that we solidify what we think are the requirements that the state, state, state laws is mandating. And again, that's a big, like, sort of what we think are the requirements. There is still some, some X factor there. And then regarding some of these other issues that Mr. Blowie and, and Mr. Doran have, have brought up, I think that the extent to which we want to go beyond what we think are what sort of council is advising us is state requirements. And I think that we really do have to have a community outreach process about them, about those, those changes, because again, like I say, it's going beyond what, what we feel is mandated. And if we're making those changes, then I think that there is a requirement that we engage the community about those changes. And again, I am a person who is very much in favor of, of being very progressive or aggressive when it comes to trying to encourage ADUs. I think specifically, if you look in single, single-family detached communities, that's the only way you're going to get any sort of density or additional housing. And so, so I do think it's an important lever, but I think we have to appreciate the limits, and that sort of digesting what is, is coming down from the state is, is a lot, and, and that we should sort of focus on that, and see to what extent the impact is of that. Like, maybe that will open up the floodgates, I don't know, and we'll start seeing a lot more ADU applications than, than we have to this point. And then from that point, I think we can go on and, and sort of look at these, these other possible, possible changes, and, and sort of engage in a full community outreach with regards to rolling them out, or considering them.
I guess the one item which I think might be worthwhile is not restricting bedrooms in a smaller unit, just because that seems like there's very little downside to that. I don't see a lot of unintended consequences for allowing someone to have two bedrooms in a smaller unit rather than one.
Impact on schools.
That's true. Impact on schools is what, yeah. I had a question about, actually, two questions about the ordinance itself. One is on page G 1-12, 8A. It says, "The owner must record a deed restriction which shall run with the land and shall include both of the following: A, a prohibition on the sale of the junior accessory dwelling unit separate from the sale of the single-family residence, including a statement that the deed restriction may be enforced against future purchases." I'm wondering why that's "maybe" as opposed to "must be"?
That language is taken from state law.
Doesn't it mean if it says "maybe" that it also may not be, in which case one could separate the unit out?
Well, I mean, I think it's, you know, who's going to enforce it? So, it's, it's always discretionary whether you're going to take legal action to enforce it. And, and so, you know, some other property owner could, or the city could. If it's a must, then who is the person who has to enforce it? Is it the city? Then every time the city becomes aware of it, then the city has to take legal action? So, and that's why it's typically in the form of a "may".
But in a situation like that, you would have to subdivide the parcel, right? So, which...
Okay, so it can't just naturally happen?
Yeah, so, yeah, you would...
That's fine.
No one would buy that in their right mind.
All right. And then the other comment is, the community director, community development director is used in most cases, and then in one it says "community development director or designee", and, which seemed to make sense. I'm wondering if it should be "or designee" in all cases where it says "community development The one case, it's where it says "or designee" is on, if you need to know it, is on G 1 dot 15, number two.
I think for flexibility, we would like it, or we would suggest that it be "community director or designee" throughout.
I agree. That makes sense. Thank you. And then, if we may, call back Mr. Blowie, and just see if there's any other thoughts he has about restricting the units so that we don't get pool houses and media rooms that we haven't thought of already.
One is, Mr. McClure mentioned it, that I had mentioned, in everything, the JADU has a shared bathroom. So, in that case, you do have to have, allow the space to be contiguous. But in the ADU included in the main house, you can firewall that, if you will. The exterior entrance is required, but not the interior pass-through. When you put the interior pass-through in, if, if you allow that, then you're encouraging the, the media room example, where it's really just a hidden expansion of the house that's taking advantage of the square footage rules. The, on the pool facility, it is both the 800 square feet that's at issue, and I think it's also the setback that's at issue. Bill commented on the 800 square feet. On that one, I think, as Bill suggested, you'd, besides getting some kind of a, at least an upfront statement, you know, "I bona fide, I am going to be using this for what you think of as ADUs", the other would ultimately, I think, come back to deed-type restrictions. To Ms. Carlton's comments, I did intend in my comments to include the extended family scenarios. So, for example, you cover the adult children, you cover the grandparents, the nieces and nephews. They're all separate from the people on the deed who are adults. The only one that I can think of in a family context that wouldn't work is you conveniently put your minor children in the pool house. That again is, that's a pool house. That's not an ADU when you're doing that. So, those are my further thoughts.
Yeah, I, I would just wanted to chime in. I think I very much appreciate the comments. I, I think we have to be cautious about getting too far ahead of ourselves and trying to guard against sort of, you know, for lack of a better phrase, bad actors, right? I mean, we can't let those scenarios lead the policy discussion. And so, I mean, I'm not willing up here to say, "Yeah, I, I don't want a door linking an interior unit from the main house", you know, because someone might use it for a media room, because I could see lots of legitimate reasons why you could have an ADU, and there would be value in having that linkage. And so, that's just how, and again, that could be an error, but it's not something, I think, like, in this moment, I would feel comfortable making, right? Because that would be something that would go beyond what state is, is mandated. And I don't have many data points of which to, other than just this idea of, like, I want to present, prevent the, the sort of, the media room, or I want to prevent the, the pool house. But for me, that, that's just not enough. I can't, I can't lead by trying to respond to possible negative actions.
I actually agree with that. I'm wondering what people think of the limitation on bedrooms for the smaller units? Because I'm willing to go ahead with not restricting the smaller units to one bedroom.
How many bedrooms can you get out of 800 square feet?
I think I actually lived in an apartment that was less than 800 square feet and two bedrooms. Although, we call that second bedroom, you know, a glorified closet. But it, it worked for toddler daughter for, for some time. I mean, I'm not, unless there is some major staff concern about this, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have, have an issue with that.
Once, once we get into two bedrooms, then we start talking about school impacts, and then we start having to do impact fees. And I really don't want to go into the, the thing of, of charging impact fees, and we haven't talked about it, just because I shy away from it, because we want to inspire people to build it. We don't want to inspire people not to build. And, and so, we're, we're trying not to have all the related impact fees. And I worry that we'll get pushback, because two bedrooms, by definition, you're going to put a child in. And, and that, by definition, is going to push into the school districts. And, and it talks about it in here, even with the larger ones, where we can avoid impact fees, where we can avoid any fee, it just inspires people that much more to grandfather them in, to bring them in, to build them, to, to increase the housing stock. That, that's my only fear.
And just to confirm, and so, the, like, because if we're going back to my case, it wasn't really a, a second bedroom, and it was not advertised as that, it was advertised as an office. But, so to have an official second bedroom, is it egress-ingress? Is it, is it like a window? Is it a closet? I, I think I've heard different things. And is it like the same in an ADU as it is in like a, what it would be in an apartment?
So, I think for what defines a bedroom, I've, and I'm not the, the building expert, but I believe you need to have the proper ingress and egress, a generally a window size, and then it generally has a closet. In terms of what it, would it be the same in an ADU, I would suspect that, since it needs to be building code, that it would be the same requirements.
I'll, I'll also chime in that with some of the Hart floor plans that have been published, there, it is very doable to get two bedrooms into an ADU that is under 800 square feet. There are several off-the-shelf floor plans for that.
I mean, again, I would just, I, I, I hear Councilmember Carlton's concern. I, I think you would be, though, I don't know that a one-bedroom prevents a kid situation if we're trying to sort of be concerned about, about, about those, those impacts. I, I think maybe it just sort of provides, you know, better, better flexibility. Again, like, I'm, I'm, if, if this is something important to Councilmember Nash, I'm certainly willing to, to go with her on this.
I just think giving people the option. I tend to think most people would not choose it with a smaller unit, but I, I guess I, I don't know why we wouldn't allow it.
So, we, we carried, I think what Cara was mentioning earlier, we, we carried over, or we, or, or regulations are proposed to what the, sort of the, what is allowed by the minimum of states. Certainly, it's a policy conversation if you want to allow two or more. I know in past conversations, when we were looking at number of bedrooms and bathrooms, it was continued to maintain at one bedroom, one bathroom in previous 2014, 13 conversations for potential overcrowdedness. And so, that was part of a conversation, and so there was a limitation on the size. Granted, with 640 square feet was the maximum size of the dwelling unit, and so now we're increasing to 800 square feet. And certainly, the two bedrooms is for anything that's of larger size, but it, it was part of a conversation of just overcrowdedness, potential parking issues, you know, how, how does, how does it fit on the lot?
Mayor Taylor, pardon the interruption. I have a time check. We are going to have to take a supermajority vote to extend the meeting past 11.
So moved. To finish the hearing, yes.
I know, taking a deep breath.
With the three-minute break in there between the two hearings.
If it's important you all support two bedrooms, that's fine. I don't think we're going to have so many people flooding the school system with ADUs, so that's fine. How about the four-foot setback for larger? Do we really care if it's 800 or 1,000 square foot for four feet? Because, again, that was one of the things when we did this, what, five years ago, that extra foot can make the difference between people's ability to build or not in some of the backyards.
Except it was five years in the previous ordinance, right? It could go from 10 feet to five feet with the consent of the neighbor.
Now it's four foot?
Right, so in the existing ordinance, the setbacks would be following the main dwelling unit, but could be reduced with the affected neighbor's approval. It could go down to five feet. Here, it's four feet for the 800 square feet, then it goes back to the, what is required of the primary dwelling unit for the larger-size unit. So, we could look at having the neighborhood approval similar to what currently exists today, if that is of interest, or you can look at just automatically making a reduction.
Did you not say it would be easier for you as well, just to have four foot if everyone agrees, rather than having to track the size? I thought I understood you to say that. That for, that for the sake of clarity for staff, that four, the four-foot rule for everything would be easier, I thought I heard you say.
I, I think, yeah, having one set of rules to implement for all would be easier, but I think what we don't have here is large, you know, an 800-square-foot unit versus a 1,000-square-foot unit. There are some, you know, that is, you know, 25% larger unit, and having it at 20, at four-foot from a setback, is that going to have a different perception for the adjacent neighbors, and so should that be...
Okay. Well, then the neighbors would say no, because it's on the condition of the neighbor saying yes, right?
Right, so it could be either a condition, as it was before, where you can get neighborhood approval, or it could be an automatic four-foot setback.
I would make it automatic.
Or they can request a use permit, which is what the option would be, as it's written right now, would be a use permit request to the planning commission to seek a setback different than the requirement.
That's a tedious thing that requires staff time and everything else. I'd rather than just have neighbor approval. Can we have neighbor approval without it being a big use permit?
Yeah, and that would be similar to what exists today.
Or, or we could just leave it. I mean, I'm just saying, I, I was just throwing it out there, since it was suggested by Mr. Doran.
I actually think we need to do more public outreach if we're going to do that.
Ms. Chow, are these items that are a part of the cleanup down the line, or are these items that we need to resolve tonight?
So, I would suggest, I would say cleanup items are more for internal consistency. So, where we have secondary dwellings listed in the R1U zoning district, it needs to now say accessory dwelling, and we didn't identify all the sections in the code that need to be replaced with the new terminology. So, that would be more of the cleanup, the things that we're talking about today in terms of, do we want to have a reduced setback? Do we want to have elimination of the floor area limit for over 12 feet? Those are going to be broader conversations, and I think we would like to have more community engagement and input from our commissioners on how to proceed on those items.
Okay, thank you.
What about loft sleeping, as long as it doesn't raise the, the height of the actual building?
That's going to come back. That's what she was just saying would come back as part of the broader outreach.
Okay.
Where do we go now? Do we need to make a motion?
So, I don't, did you ever close the public hearing?
No.
Okay, so you need to close the public hearing first, please.
I closed the public hearing.
Okay, and then there would be a motion to adopt the, as an urgency ordinance, the ordinance 1066, which is attached with the... 1066, which is attached with the two cleanups that were referenced in the presentation, and changing wherever it says, direct, community development director, community development director, or designate.
And, and adding no limitation of bedrooms? Or to, not?
And eliminating the limitation on bedrooms based on the size of the unit, which is in which section?
Or max to two is, I mean, I don't know how, yeah.
I have a, also a suggestion on next steps is I would like to see the planning commission and housing commission, since they expressed an interest in forming a subcommittee, to work on additional updates.
Can we take that as a separate motion?
Yes.
And do the ordinance first, and then come back and?
Yes.
Please.
So, so that last amendment was to permit two bedrooms maximum in all ADUs in single-family districts?
Yes.
Okay. So the, so that, I believe, is the motion.
The motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent.
So then the question is the direction on the next steps with the ADU. And I think the, the issue there is with the grant that has been proposed, you know, and this is not, I don't think this is on the work plan schedule currently for staff or planning commission.
So the additional ADU conversation has been part of an ongoing conversation that we've been having with subcommittees and with our goal-setting session. And so it is something that the council has an opportunity to direct staff, provide guidance on where it falls in the priorities. We're suggesting that it lies with the timing of the housing element. We have until June 2022 to implement our SB2 grant. And so we think that there could be some synergy there with public outreach and opportunities for understanding ADUs and, and give us also opportunity to see how effective the existing state law is working and where we might need to make some tweaks.
I would just like to, to the extent possible, if we can track if there's any, as one of my councilmembers, the other councilmember said, bad actors. If we see indications that people might be making additions that are not for living quarters, that would be worth bringing back with the other subcommittee. Thank you.
I just found in the ordinance where it says the maximum height is 16 feet, you meant external? Or is that internal as well?
So the 16 feet is for a detached ADU? If it's attached, then it follows the height regulations of the primary dwelling unit.
I thought you were saying that it could have a 16-foot ceiling inside as well? So it cannot?
The maximum height has to be 16, so it could be.
The maximum height is not changing. I'm talking about the ceiling inside.
Right. So we don't regulate the ceiling height?
We don't regulate the ceiling height.
But I think the question that you were asking earlier was about floor area limit.
So that's on record. We don't regulate the ceiling height in ADUs.
But it counts towards FAL.
I mean, so, yeah, so we don't.
I'm not talking about FAR. I'm talking about the allowable ceiling height in an ADU. So if it's 800 square foot and it has a 14-foot ceiling so that they can have a sleeping area, they can still build it as an 800-square-foot ADU. Because there's literally no reason why we shouldn't allow that.
The loft may count as FAL. Okay? That's, and so that's a different issue than the allowable ceiling height. Allowable ceiling heights is a different question than how you measure FAL. So.
No, it's not, because the way it's done is they count double FAL if the ceiling's higher.
So we, it, there are, there's a definition of how you calculate FAL that is a separate question than what is the ceiling height. So there's no.
I'm not talking about FAL. I'm talking about FAR.
Hang on, hang on. There is no maximum limit on the ceiling height. But if you build a second floor in there, it, that second floor may be double counted if your ceiling exceeds 12 feet, because of the way we define floor area limits. So this ordinance does not, is not changing FALs at all. So this is just allowing.
Again, I'm not talking about FAL. I'm talking about FAR for the.
FAR doesn't apply to single-family homes or secondary dwelling units. FAL applies to them. Floor area limits. So, so the floor area limit is based on, you know, if that loft area counts as a quote floor.
I can see that being counted, but.
Yeah.
But the rest of the high ceiling also would be counted double.
If, if that is a floor, then you would be double counting, because then it's a two-story structure and you may count the FAL. Again, we, I can't figure that out sitting here tonight, but the, we're not changing that definition.
I think you're not understanding what I'm saying. The part of the building where there's nothing built, it's just a ceiling, will get double counted.
Correct. If, if it is considered, if that loft is considered a floor.
That loft is going to be counted. I'm talking about the place where there is no loft. It's just ceiling.
Correct. So for a two-story structure, which is defined as having two floors, so any structure that is two stories, because it has two floors, then any area of that structure that exceeds 12 feet is counted as double FAL.
Okay. Just for the sake of clarity, I have no, nothing built. I just have one room. I have one studio place, and it has 14-foot ceilings. It would be considered WF, double.
No, because it's a single-story structure. So a single-story structure does not double count FAL. So you can have a 16-foot ceiling height if it's a one-story structure and it's only counted as FAL. And so the footprint of that is 800 square feet, it's 800 square feet. You build a two-story structure where the living room height is 12 feet, but it has two floors in part of the structure, it's a two-story structure, and then that open area that exceeds 12 feet, that portion of the building that exceeds 12 feet is double counted.
That, that's what I have an issue with.
No, I understand that. I, I, we totally understand that.
Okay.
And, and that's not being changed by this ordinance. So.
I guess I'm lamenting that I wish it was, because I think it's a stupid rule.
Well, it, again, it's there for a reason, and it has to do with bulk and size and certain other things.
But it doesn't change the outside of the building, so bulk and size doesn't apply.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that you can fit a loft structure in a 12-foot space anyway, but.
You can't. That's my point. You need 16 feet. Well, we'll get back to it. It's, but I'm profoundly irritating that for no good reason, we're preventing people from building what is a recommended footprint for an ADU.
So, and I'll make this quick, a sort of follow-up process question. So like, how do you see this actually sort of being sort of enveloped within the housing element? Is it something that's going to be like a separate standalone effort? Because I would possibly like to see something, or have staff consider some sort of like, you know, some sort of task force made up of like members of city council, the housing commission, and the planning commission, to sort of very specifically take up sort of like ADU and see where is there sort of movement we can make with regards to certain state, state, like state mandates, of what we, we've passed tonight.
So I can envision a separate but parallel track with the housing element and looking at the timing of adoption. We could potentially look at an, an adoption earlier than the housing element so that, but it would be kind of kicking off as we're starting to do engagement, identifying the program. It would be a program out of the housing element, and it'd be a separate but parallel track.
So I have a follow-up question. After Vice Mayor Combs' statement, it, so the next steps that were suggested or asked for from the planning commission or housing, not sure which commission, asked to have a joint task force, if that means to expand it and include council as well? Since we're on that, it envisioned the ADU as being on a parallel track with the housing element. So it, that was a question somehow in there.
So I think we can look at establishing a committee, you know, if it's consisting of members from the housing commission, the planning commission, members of the city council. I think once we have a work program identified, we can come back and identify, and the council can give us direction on who should make up that body. And then we can meet with that body as we move forward with, with potential changes in implementation of our ADU ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So now we need to make a motion? The hearing is closed. I'm checking.
You already approved the motion?
We already approved it.
And unless you're giving different direction than what was proposed by staff, then?
No. No. No different direction. It's just late. So we are finished with item G1, the first hearing, and I need about three minutes. The next item on the agenda is our second public hearing, G2, adopt a resolution for establishing utility underground districts for Alma Street Downtown Parking, Downtown Parking Plazas 7 and 8, and Menlo Avenue and Middlefield Road. I am confident that my council has read the staff report, so I was wondering if our presenters are okay with us asking questions, if we have any?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? No. Councilmember Nash?
I actually wanted to read a comment for Adina Levin, who was not able to stay this late.
Councilmember Nash, I do apologize for interruption, but we do have public speakers. Adina is one of them. So if we could attach your comment to her speaker, that would be perfect.
So let's open it up to our public speakers. The first is Robert Lico Giannati. The next public speaker is David Howard.
Hi, David Howard, 721 Menlo Avenue. I don't quite get it. I thought they were going to explain this to us tonight, and I guess you guys have all read up on it, and I don't, I haven't had the chance. But my main concern is, is that I am totally for putting all the utilities underground in Menlo Avenue. I think that the utilities that are there now are ISOR. I think that the utilities that have all their stuff up there haven't been maintaining it some 18, 19 years ago. I called the police because a wire was down. It took two weeks for them, someone to come out. I don't think it was the police, but someone to come out. And they took and tied the wire to the telephone pole. And to date, it's still tied to the telephone pole. Nobody's ever gone through to maintain the thing. I think it's ridiculous that it's up there. My mom, back 50, 60 years ago, came to the city and said, you people need to start putting your stuff underground. And I'm very glad to see you putting it underground now. My main complaint, or my main concern right now is I have this tree that it's at least 70 years old. And I have documented, I have pictures of it back in 1955, and it was at least 30 feet tall. It's not the prettiest tree in the world. There's trees around it that are absolutely gorgeous, but it's something that we love. And I just, in fact, four weeks ago, paid an arborist $4,000 to climb up there and do all of his tree trimming and everything like that. Over the past 50 years, we've had the tree topped two or three times. And for our family, it's a beautiful tree. There is no way of getting the electric underground from the street to where it needs to go without undermining that tree and possibly destroying it. Back in 1967, when Co-op Foods was there, they sold their land to Trader Joe's, and Trader Joe's moved in, but that didn't include the property, which was 714 Menlo Avenue. It got added to 707 Menlo Avenue, and a beautiful little office building was built with a parking lot there. They went to put a transformer in. We came to the city. We, we pleaded with them. We got the developer to get an arborist over there, and we had this whole big thing. And today, that tree has not suffered because of all the time that we took with that. I don't want to be left out and have you guys already approved this and throw in a line that cuts down all the beautiful trees, you know, in there. We were tree, we're a city of trees, and I love trees. One other thing, I know I'm out of time. If we're going to do utility upgrades, I really think we need to look at storm drains down Menlo Avenue. It is very dangerous for people going to Trader Joe's. They're constantly having to jump three or four feet. I've seen women crash. I've seen them destroy their shoes and everything else. Anyway, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Elias Blowie.
Hi, Elias Blowie, again, Menlo Park resident. So in general, I remember seeing this a few weeks ago. What strikes me as different from when I saw it then to now is the list has been narrowed down, if you will, to the finalists. And in there, I have concerns. The more general principle, of course, undergrounding makes sense. It's extraordinarily expensive as a general proposition. I get that. So there are only so many dollars to go around. But I look at this allocation, and I honestly, I scratch my head about the result, and I scratch my head about the methodology. First of all, the methodology, which puts parking plazas 7 and 8 on top, one category just blows it out all by itself. Ability to combine with other projects scores 16. There's no other category that even has a 16-point scale. So this is to, honestly, this looks like data that, well, may be prepared innocently, but it's certainly, you can manipulate this data in this format to get to an answer. I don't think this is an objective presentation. I think this is subjective. I think there are, and I don't mean to bemoan any particular one of these projects, but I do question, you know, wait a minute. It's not that any of, it's not that you just found the few cheapest ones, or the, those are the suggestions, the ones that are, both the ones rejected and the ones accepted. Some of these have real serious dollars to them. Let me speak to a couple that I'm surprised didn't make the list in contrast to the parking plaza. Those would be either Santa Cruz Avenue or Middle Avenue. Santa Cruz Avenue is supposedly the gateway to our downtown. Drive down it. I mean, you can't help but not miss the god-awful power poles and that god-awful cell thing that was stuck in front, top of one. You know, what the heck is that doing there? How about the power pole that's embedded in the concrete sidewalk that's on Santa Cruz Avenue? We'd probably see some recognition of that. That's an oddball. It's a safety issue, too. It's a basic safety issue. Let me tell you a simple story, tragic story. I saw my first death at age 14 years old. That death was a person who had a medical condition, who drove his car into a telephone pole at about 30 miles an hour and was incinerated. Those things happen with power poles on city streets with some regularity, and people get maimed and so on. They happen with trees, of course, too. Where I don't think they happen is parking plazas. Yeah, you can have the occasional dumb accidents and things, but not at that level of seniority and severity and the speeds involved. They're entirely different. So I would urge more consideration to some of our gateway access areas like Santa Cruz, Middle for that matter, too. And I don't really understand the distinguishment from Middlefield. They all have some justification, but I question this answer. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last public speaker. So bring it back to the dais, and are there any questions from council?
At this time, I'd request City Councilmember Nash to read Adina's comments.
No, I'm not to read it for our consideration. Thanks. So this actually dovetails nicely with Mr. Blowey's. This is Adina Levin on electricity undergrounding. Why not the segment on Santa Cruz Avenue between Fremont to Johnson? When the city added sidewalks, there were comments about the narrow and obstructed sidewalks in that segment. The response was that this could be done when the city does its next segment of utility undergrounding. So I don't understand why this is not listed. undergrounding, so I don't understand why this is not listed. And this is, just to add to that comment, this is the part which has utilities, poles, and lots of hazards in this, a very narrow sidewalk. It's the sidewalk that was not redone as part of the Santa Cruz Avenue sidewalks project, and there's, I think it would be a strong candidate to be undergrounded there. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Would you want to close the public hearing at this time?
Yes, ma'am. I will close the public hearing at this time. And then I have a question about Councilmember Nash's question or comment. Is there opportunity to do what's being suggested as far as with Santa Cruz Avenue?
Certainly. Santa Cruz Avenue actually was included in one of the corridors that we evaluated. It didn't rank as high as other corridors, but it is definitely one that we can adopt if the council chooses to do so at a future date.
Is there support from at least one other council member to switch one of the places for the undergrounding to Santa Cruz?
I'm sorry. The adoption for that, we need to have a notification for a new district, and they cannot be done tonight. We can bring that back at a future date with appropriate notice into the property owners and hold the public here at that time. For tonight's purpose, those are the three districts that have been notified. The community have been notified.
Okay, thank you for the clarity, and it does make sense to have one of the districts be the entrance of a downtown. Did you have a question?
Just for clarity, I thought we weren't deciding the exact places tonight. I thought we were creating the district.
That's exactly right. Tonight, we are establishing the districts.
So we'll decide later where?
At the future time, when the council decides with your next year's priorities and next year's work plan, we can establish, you know, develop other locations.
So I have two follow-up questions on that. I thought we already had the money together to do this in the parking plazas, and why we chose the parking plazas, I have no idea. I think that was even before me getting on council. I think it was because they wanted to rip it up and redo the parking plazas, so it made sense to do it then. I don't know. But I want to make sure that regardless of where we do it, we are mindful that we have dig wants. It drove me crazy to put in the new parking, the new sidewalks down Santa Cruz and not underground the electric things that go along there. That was just crazy, and we didn't do it because I was told we didn't have the money yet to afford to do it. And so, instead of doing it then, it's going to cost us more to tear up the sidewalks and do it a second time. So, absolutely, we need to do this. I thought that we had, so we don't have the money together to do the parking plazas seven and eight. I thought we had that years ago. We've been, we created the district, and we're paying into it as part of the process with PG&E.
No, we have never established a district for undergrounding of utilities on the parking lots.
We have been paying into it with PG&E. I know this for a fact. What have we been paying into?
Typically, the way it works, you accrue allocation, credit allocation, from PG&E.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell you exactly what locations you need to expend it on. Council chooses where to spend it.
But we have been accruing money from PG&E, correct?
That's correct. We have accrued funds.
Okay. So this is allocated.
So this is now, we are coming to you to establish a district and then build projects accordingly.
However we do this, I just beg staff and council, dig once. Like, stop it where we go in, and we do it, then we tear it up, and we do it again. It's just a waste of money, and it just inconveniences people for no reason. So I know that's part of the process in here, is when it can be done together with something else, and I hope we don't lose that focus.
Yeah, and that's a great point, and that's part of the reason why the ranking criteria for the ability to combine the undergrounding with other ongoing capital projects was scored highly, so that we can coordinate those things together.
That's going to save us a million dollars. Thank you.
So just in the context of these three areas, the staff report summarizes, for each of these different undergrounding districts, the ongoing capital work that we would coordinate with. And so, in line of the comments about Santa Cruz Avenue, that section was just repaved. So in order to underground, if that is a council priority to underground between Johnson and Arbor, we would be tearing up the street that just was paved two years ago. On the flip side, Middlefield Road, one of the reasons why it ranked highly in our corridor assessment was that we are gearing up to redesign and repave Middlefield, and so the timing would work out better for where we are with our paving program to coordinate with Middlefield Road and Santa Cruz right now.
One last comment on that, and that's, I think that, and obviously, this is a discussion, not for now, but just, I think only from Fremont to Johnson is the area that's really affected by the poles in the middle of the sidewalk, and that's something that people deal with every day, so I think it's worth a discussion as to that section of the sidewalks, and realizing that it would hurt the pavement that was just, yeah, the nice pavement on the street that's working beautifully.
Absolutely. So, we would just, for purposes of tonight, in order to preserve our service credits, we just need the council to take action to adopt one of, at least one of these options. If you want to prioritize Santa Cruz, I would suggest next Tuesday evening of the study session on the City Capital Improvement Plan, and that could be a place where we'd look at the overall priorities for potential additional undergrounding districts to be prioritized in the context of the CIP.
We're having technical problems here. I keep trying to motion, and it keeps telling us we voted.
We already have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay. Ask me for a motion, then.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Mueller absent.
The next item on the agenda are informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the City Council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the City Council. Information items are not an action item. However, a City Council member, City staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. And do we have a public comment card for informational?
Yes, item I four.
I four. Are there any questions before we get to that? On I one, two, or three, from council? Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to confirm that on I two, that it's, the study session is now calendared for March 3, rather than March 24.
Yes.
Thank you.
And on I three, Government Alliance on Race and Equity, there was a letter submitted by the County Sustainability Office, and I think this was just around 5:00 PM. So you do not have a copy of it at the dais, but essentially, they were complimenting Menlo Park for being one of the first cities in San Mateo County to look at becoming members of GARE. So I hope you take the time to read the letter. And now, we will move on to I four and take public comment. Pam Jones?
Good evening, and thank you for giving me forty-five seconds. My name is Pamela Jones, and I'm a resident of Menlo Park. In regards to finally, the USGS land becoming available, a couple of things I don't want us to miss that are in the staff report, and that is that the GSA has to follow certain federal requirements for the disposal of property, and it requires us to, requires them to consult with other public agencies. Woo-hoo, us! And I think there's also somewhere in there, something about surplus lands, that it requires it to also be involved in housing, and so maybe our legal department can look at that and see where that is, because it would be great if in rezoning, because I'm assuming that we're going to, that we're going to invest in this property, that if not all, a significant portion would be for housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Thank you. When I heard about this, I called Kara, our council on call at the time, and asked her if we could jump in and do the zoning on this, and she said we could. It's obviously yet another thing that's going to take staff time to look at, but I thought this was critically important, and thank you very much to the mayor, because I copied the mayor and the city manager and said, "We know we're really busy, but please, please, can we look at this?" Because I think it's really important. This is a really great opportunity to provide housing right by the school. Right, you know, this is perfect for teachers. It's perfect location for transit, and I know it's yet another thing that sucks our staff time, but I really do think this is important.
Councilmember Nash?
I, as part of the housing, I'm sorry, as part of the subcommittee districts two through five, we actually discussed this and thought this was an excellent opportunity for housing, and I'd like to push ahead as fast as we can go. We know that this is coming up, and it's one of the first times that we can actually see clearly the path ahead and do something about it, and I would love to know what the opportunities are for, I know that it's currently zoned as public facility. How do we make sure that we get housing in the mix in the way that we want to? Multifamily housing, affordable housing, housing for maybe city staff, teachers, we should be looking at all these different options, but we should be pushing this opportunity strongly.
So, we have money in our housing fees. Maybe we could find a partner, MidPen or something like that, to help develop it as a partner?
I've actually had a couple developers approach me about it. There are people who are interested in doing that, and one of the pieces that I think we need to do to look at is our BMR guidelines and increasing the percentage of BMR and the fees that we have for BMR, and making sure that we have all of our, as they say, ducks in a row going into this.
Absolutely. One of the interesting things about the Brown Act is that you and I are working on the same thing, but we didn't know about it because we can't talk to each other. So it's, I'm really delighted to see that you're running with this as well. Thank you.
I would just add, I think, again, very exciting and a pretty sort of amazing sort of generational opportunity, but based on the press articles I read, this property is valued in the hundreds of millions of dollars, and so, and us and MidPen don't have that. And so, I think that that's going to be, going back to, like, what's the missing element here? Is that, obviously, there's going to be an auction, and I think my question for staff is, to what extent are we tracking this auction? Or do we have any plans to, do we have any plans to engage congressional representation with regard to, I don't know what role they play in this auction, and to what extent, you know, is there a process to engage with potential bidders who may reach out to, you know, to the city? Because we can zone all we are, and zoning is definitely going to be important, and I think we all see the priority of housing, but, you know, at the end of the day, someone's going to write a very large check to acquire this land, and, you know, I think maybe we should see this as a conversation that we'll have with them versus just us saying that this is what we'd like to see happen.
So I was reading in the newspaper this morning about the, in Cupertino, Falco Park, they are trying to, okay, you saw this, they're trying to downzone, and they're being sued by the Sand Hill Properties, because even though they're not currently planning to build on one section of it, it's getting downzoned because of the job's housing imbalance, and so that's why I, we need legal counsel, but I think that, what I took away from that is, we need to actively pursue it ahead of time before we get people purchasing it.
Okay, totally fair. In that case, though, it's the council trying to downzone, right? And so here, I don't think that there's an actor that wants to necessarily sort of downzone.
Actually, I thought that they were taking, I thought they were downzoning the office, was what I took away.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
So, one big difference is, this is zoned PF. So, a private user can't go in and operate without getting a use permit, and so, I mean, we can talk internally and maybe come back with some ideas about what kind of direction the council can give staff to communicate to GSA and to the real estate broker that's going to be handling this in terms of, you know, what the city's preference is for development without necessarily initiating a rezoning and general plan amendments to do that, because ultimately, if a developer is informed that the city is not likely to approve a private use of PF-zoned property, that they're going to have to reapply to rezone the property, that the city's preference is multifamily, you know, higher-density residential, if that's what we think the policy is, it's going to have to go through environmental review, et cetera. But the council could give some direction in terms of preference that we could then be communicated so that a potential buyer is informed of what the process they're going to have to go through and what the preferred use would be, and then they can bring through a development project with an application to rezone, amend the general plan, et cetera. Maybe the way to do it where we're not spending all the time to do that ahead of time, but...
And I know that there's a lot of active interest on the council on this project. Some of you know I have a new mantra, "No more council subcommittees," but this might break that rule. I mean, it might be, and we'll bring back an item, but I think you should consider appointing a subcommittee to work with staff.
Thank you. And we will do that when we have the full council here. I think that would be fair, because I know that Councilmember Mueller had some interest as well. We'll be drawing straws. Okay.
Worth pointing out, none of us actually represent the district where that's located.
Good point.
Correction, I do.
For a few more months.
Yeah.
The next item which we did not complete was K, item K, which is council member reports. And, not sure if anyone to my left had a council member report, subcommittee or regional board you attended recently and wanted to report on, if the city manager had a report.
Just to emphasize that we did move the meeting for CIP review to the third, so March 3. Councilmember Nash pointed that earlier.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I was informed that this is Mr. McClure's last city council meeting. Is that correct?
It is my last meeting as the, the, capital T, city attorney.
For like, how many decades?
I was appointed interim city attorney effective March 1 of 1993, so my first day of retirement will be my twenty-seventh anniversary.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for twenty-seven years of your life.
You're welcome.
Helping the city.
I have enjoyed it. I have really enjoyed it, so, thanks.
Actually, what I think is wonderful is that you're a Menlo Park resident, so we will continue to see you.
Born and bred.
I think I've actually run into your family at Stanford soccer games, too.
I'll ditto everything that was said, I think in 1993, I wasn't born yet.
Don't even.
Yes, I congratulate you on a long and distinguished career of service to the city, and you are going out to the end. It's almost midnight, and you're still here hanging in.
But wait, there's an item coming that is one of your favorites. One of the report outs that I wanted to do had to do with leaf blowers and folding our leaf blower band into our climate action plan, and I was wondering if you had any direction? I'm being serious.
That's one that I would run from personally. No, it's been a long time since that came up, but it's been before the council, twice before, and once a gasoline leaf blower band was adopted, and then petitions were passed around to repeal it, and the council then rescinded it because it qualified for a referendum, and then it came around again about, I don't know, five or 10 years later, and the council got up to the point of about to introduce an ordinance again, and, you know, the council chambers were filled, you know? Maybe it's time that something like that would be considered, but, you know, I don't know.
It would be gasoline, because there are now a lot of people using electric.
Yes. Well, I'm hoping that a part of having the climate action plan and looking at a ban on gas leaf blowers, that we would start with our own, so start with what the city uses. For me, it would make sense. So if it's, I get support from the rest of the council if we can include having a ban specifically with the city's use of gas leaf blowers to start with, to show demonstration of what we will be asking for in the future.
So my question is, one, does the city own leaf blowers? And what does that transition look like? And then, two, like, are there, is most of the sort of leaf blowing work that's done on city property, is it done by city employees, or is it done by a vendor? And if so, how does that engagement look like?
Well, Justin will help me out here. I think when I see leaf blowers on campus, it's always our own employees, so that's the only use I've seen. Uh-oh, Nikki thinks I'm wrong about that. So I'll let her finish.
Yeah, so I think it's a combination. We have both city employees in our park section and the maintenance division that are leaf blowing at city parks, city facilities, as well as vendors that we contract for median and park maintenance. So I think if it's something that the council wants to consider, we could take that direction through goal setting this year and look at what that budgetary impact would be. You also have coming up a consideration of the herbicide free parks initiative, so both of those things factored together could be a fairly significant cost implication, but we just need to consider that in the context of the other service initiatives that you'd want to pursue for the upcoming budget year.
And as you understand, just so I'm clear, so the cost would be buying electric leaf blowers, or is there some other cost that I'm not seeing?
So I think electric leaf blowers is one bucket, and then if those aren't effective or if they need to be charged, is there some other way that we need to provide that maintenance? So I have an electric leaf blower at home, it works great for my yard, but on the scale of the parks maintenance, whether a battery can actually support an entire day's work, I don't know offhand, we'd have to do some research about that.
But this isn't actually on the agenda, so I know we're not really talking about it, you're just talking about future interests in this topic, yeah?
Well, and I guess one other comment about the electric leaf blowers is I hear that there may be a state law coming down, so we'll see.
Or maybe the Air Resources Board, something like that. I mean, there has been some discussion that maybe something would be coming through them because of the type of motor and particulates and all that stuff.
Just, and my follow-up question on this is, can it be folded into the climate action plan? I didn't know if that's a Ms. Nagaya question.
So I think broadly, the climate action plan gives overall priorities and concepts to be implemented to encourage reductions in greenhouse gases, but the plan itself doesn't necessarily implement anything. So then it's up to the council to prioritize the initiatives through the climate action plan.
Thank you for the clarity.
I do think it is, though, worth pointing out, please correct me if I'm wrong, though, the climate action plan, as has been presented and sort of forwarded by the EQC, does not include, you know, the recommendation of a leaf blower plant, and it was something that they did consider, in all fairness, right? And then they decided not to, and so if we did go and decide to add it, we would be doing it, you know, contrary to what has been the advice from EQC, which we certainly can do.
So as one of the council members on the subcommittee for CAP, when we met with the EQC, it was not specifically as a citywide policy on the plan, because it really is not one of the bigger impact that we can have in reducing greenhouse gases, but one of the pieces that we did include in, or that I believe is going to be included in the climate action plan, was having the city model all the behaviors that we're looking for our residents to adopt in, and so this would definitely be one of the pieces that would possibly be a city, part of the city policy, where we strive to do 100% electric within the city. But there will definitely be the resource implications with this and the other pieces.
So that is the end of our council member reports?
I actually have some council member reports if we want to hear them. I was at the CCAG meeting as an alternate this, last week, and the thing that I'm bringing forward that just struck me, I had not heard of it before, is as part of the 101 Express Lanes project, that there's going to be temporary freeway and street closures at night, Sunday through Thursday nights, starting as early as 9:00 PM and ending no later than 5:30 PM, and it's going to be starting, I believe, this month, next month, and lasting for about two years. And there will be updates, I'm not exactly sure how that will come to us yet, but it will be an impact. Mayor Taylor and I also attended the fire district meeting on the 18th to discuss, where the Atherton possibly withdrawing from the fire district was discussed, and if anyone wants more information, ask either of us. EQC meeting on the 19th was, we had a heritage tree appeal, but the big discussion was around Community Zero Waste Plan, which I think is coming to us in a few weeks, and Mayor Taylor and I met with the M Group along with Justin Murphy and Starla Jerome Robinson, and the four of us, I think, were very impressed and had a very good discussion with M Group, and now we need to figure out where we take that from here. Also, Palo Alto Rail Town Meeting was very interesting on the 20th, where they're discussing how they're going to do grade crossing for Palo Alto, and it includes the hybrid, the trench, well, the hybrid and the viaduct, which we're looking at, and they're also looking at trenching, and they still have tunnel on the docket, so it's very interesting. They have several more meetings if anyone's interested, and lots of information on the website, and that's it.
Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. McClure, for all of your service to the city of Menlo Park, you are appreciated.